Okay, good morning. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish a quorum?
Supervisor Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
And Chair Serna?
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Great. Would you like to read our statement, please?
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard on 96.5 FM KUBU radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, February 28th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, and gestures or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda/off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda/off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives the request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes. The remainder of agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well now, will you please join Supervisor Kennedy, rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everyone who has joined us here this morning in chambers for our hearing, for our meeting. Again, friendly reminder, we certainly welcome your full participation in today's meeting. We do ask respectfully that you please keep your comments to no more than two minutes, and we have that limit in place so that anyone who wishes to address the Board on any matter that is on or off our agenda has the opportunity to do so. So with that, Madam Clerk, first item.
First item is public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda, and we do have a few members of the public that are here. First member is Lance Hatfield. Mr. Hatfield? We'll move to Richard O.
Good morning, Board. I'd like to address this question to you this morning. What form of government do we have in this country? Usually, the answer that I will receive, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, is it's a representative democracy. Now, this is an important question because it gets to the root of who we are as a people and as a nation. The founders of this country in deliberating knew the history of democracies, from the Greek city-states all the way through history. It's mob rule, 51% can do whatever they want. It always ends in tyranny, always. This is a constitutional republic. California entered this union of states in 1850 as a constitutional republic, where the Constitution is the law, the highest law of the land. It is democracy in sense that all its citizens can vote and a majority prevails, but only under the framework of the US Constitution. So I just want to make that point clear because we've had confusion over this in the recent election, where non-citizens vote. That undermines our constitutional republic. It's forbidden in both US and California constitutions. And also, for example, in Sacramento becoming a sanctuary city, again, doubling down on this, that is unconstitutional. And there are, we read the court cases and also the fines and punishments due to that. Now, the most recent attempt to escape this is found in a letter by Cal exit to the Secretary, Rob Bonta, and they appealed to proposition, which we have, a voter initiative since 1911 to put propositions on the ballot and the voters can decide that. And I want to read the letter that, I'm not out of time. I yield.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, this is the highest law of the land.
Betty in?
Rich Patrick Phil Rosario, who's new, I didn't see her last time, and Pat Hume, hello. I was here before, and Rosario missed it, and some other people did see it, but I was concerned with our elected officials being complicit in pushing disinformation on people, telling people that they must adhere to all kinds of things, vaccines. When someone stood up here, I saw someone up here talking about how they're not going to do anything about the vaccines and the horrible things. So as these things come through your hands, you either give it a stamp of approval or you say something, you do something. Why aren't you doing anything? I've thought to myself that. I wonder, and I think I know why. This is a career choice, where you're in line to want the betterment for yourself, the important table, the best the world has to offer. And you look at me, and you're probably thinking, who is she? How is she coming here and saying anything to me? Do you know who I am? Well, I'm going to tell you something. I don't know when you chose that you weren't enough. I don't know when you decided that you needed to do follow the system in order to be somebody, but who you were, who you left behind, that made you be complicit in the evil that has been done to people, to harm them with vaccines, and society being harmed and destroyed, and children being mutilated under your watch. You have a chance to turn back. It's not too late. You can turn back and go to who you left behind, because guess what? That person is good enough. I am good enough. I don't have to have a title, or sit at a table, or follow this ladder up to the top in order to be somebody. You have a civic duty to serve me. And so when you see something harming the people of our state, you step in and you do something. Use your agency, Rosario, as you're new to this, to do something. Use your voice.
Can you please conclude your remarks? Thank you.
And Sarah Mattson?
Thank you. And this, I'm assuming, is working here? Don't start my time. You've got, oh, here we go, beautiful. So, good morning, Supervisors. I'm Sarah Mattson, and Happy New Year. Due to family reasons, this is my first time being able to address you this year. And I just, I'm here to speak about, as a resident, and in support to protect Sailor Bar from motor vehicle access. And here's a little pamphlet that you can see if you haven't seen it before. Almost a generation has never seen cars on the Sailor Bar trails meant for equestrian use, and over 5,000 residents already so far have risen up to unite and say no to force cars by petition. The Sierra Club, the Audubon Society, the Save American River, and even the county's Disability Advisory Commission that advises you on this board has said no to motor vehicles. And so I can't help but say that there's something fishy, and it's not the salmon. Why is this being forced? And I do want to put this one on top, because I'm usually here talking about the Board's duty to abide by the doctrine of the lesser magistrate, and how it is your right and your duty to reject unlawful and tyrannical laws that are passed by the state. But in this situation, you Supervisors, you actually have complete authority. You have complete authority, because as you can see the hierarchy of how the county works, we, the residents, are at the top of the pyramid. We elect you to represent us. And what is happening in this situation is that a bureaucratic, non-elected official, director of one of these lower, is coming in and forcing us to accept something that is literally not the wish of the people and the will of the people. And so, at least I'm going to ask in my last five seconds, let this go to vote of the citizens. Please honor your oath of office and support the residents who elected you. Thank you so much. God bless you.
That concludes our public comments for this morning.
All right, very good. Thank you. Onto our next item, then.
Items number 2 through 52 are consent matters for this morning. Do have one clerk note for item number 11, which is to approve the attached resolution delegating authority to the district administrator to negotiate and execute a lease between the Carmichael Recreation and Park District and the Sacramento Fine Arts Center. I will need a motion for this Board acting as the Carmichael Recreation and Park District to drop this item from the agenda this morning.
Okay, very good. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for County Council. I wish to recuse myself on item 17. I'm not sure that I've received a campaign contribution above the threshold, and I don't know that I've received it in the appropriate time limitation, but out of abundance of caution, I'm just going to recuse. Do I have to do that physically, or can I just note my recusal?
In this instance, you can just note your recusal.
So noted. Thank you.
All right, very good. So, we need a motion to drop?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please vote.
That item does pass unanimously.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Any other notes, Madam Clerk?
No other notes for me, but I would like to read item number 17 in the record, if you would.
Please.
And item number 17 is PLMP 2024-00072 Steamboat Acres Boundary Lot Line Adjustment, a board review for a property located at 12414 and 12348 State Highway 160 at the intersection of Sutter Island Road and State Highway 160 in the Delta Community. Applicant Judy Chung, a environmental determination is exempt.
Okay, great. Thank you. And again, for the record, it will be noted that Supervisor Hume is recusing himself on that item. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public that have signed up to speak on consent matters?
On consent matters, we have one for item number 17. Michael Newheart?
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Newheart. I am Representative Steamboat Acres LLC. I'm here to make comments about item number 17, which concerns Steamboat Acres LLC and Steamboat Landing Bar and Grill. I just want to thank you to the Chairman of the Board, Phil Serna, and the rest of the Board for allowing me to speak. You should have received the February 26, 2024 Planning and Environmental Review document that we sent to you guys. Is the desire of both parties involved in this lotline adjustment to be approved by the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for the benefit of both parties involved, and to have, mainly to having to promote peace and harmony between Steamboat Landing Bar and Grill and Steamboat Acres LLC. I am here to answer any questions you may have concerning this matter, and if there are none, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you, before you and the Board, and we would highly appreciate your approval of the slotline adjustment on behalf of Steamboat Acres LLC. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Newheart. Any questions for speakers? All right, seeing none. Thanks again. Okay, Madam Clerk, no other members of the public signed up to speak on consent matters?
There are none.
Okay, very good. Any member of the Board wish to pull any item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of consent before we vote. Item number 35, I just want to offer thanks to staff, so if the clerk could please read item 35.
Item number 35 is to approve an appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $4,712,000 for pharmaceutical purchases.
Very good. Thank you. Won't go into the details of the item, other than to just express my gratitude to our Health Director, Mr. Lutz, for answering questions that came up in individual board briefings about some of the pretty notable increases in various pharmaceuticals that have occurred over the months and recent years. I think all of us had raised eyebrows when we saw some of those percentages, so we do appreciate the follow-up. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We've heard from members of the public on consent matters. Please vote.
And Chair Serna, would you like to take a separate vote for item number 17, so that Supervisor Hume can vote on the remainder of the items for the consent calendar?
I don't think we need to.
I think for clarity's purposes, we should. That way he can vote on the remaining items.
Okay, all right. All right, so just on item 17, please vote.
And that does pass for with one recusal.
Okay, very good. And for the balance of consent, please vote.
I would need a separate motion and second.
There is one.
I'll move the remainder of consent.
And that does pass unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Item number 53 is a presentation of resolution recognizing February as Therapeutic Recreation Month and celebrating the 50th anniversary of Sacramento County Therapeutic Recreation Services.
Good morning, Chair Serna, members of the Board, Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks. I'm very happy to be here to have this resolution to recognize February as Therapeutic Recreation Month. Therapeutic Recreation is a very important part of our department, a very small, yet mighty division. We have two full-time employees, several part-time employees, and a large number of volunteers that support our therapeutic recreation services. In case you are not aware, therapeutic recreation services helps promote leisure independence and optimal lifestyle. It actually brings, enhances well-being, and also provides a greater sense of accomplishment for our participants. Some quick highlights for 2024. We served almost 9,000 participant experiences, offered 220 programs, and had 4,811 volunteer hours. We have a special Olympics team called the Sacramento County Chargers. They had 153 athletes train and compete in a variety of sports, and we had extended travel programs. The programs that we offer through therapeutic recreation services include virtual programming, special events, sports training, day trips, classes, overnight travel, camps, and outdoor adventures. I am happy to welcome two of our therapeutic recreation services staff here today, if you'd like to come up so I can present this resolution. And this year, although not 175 years, is a special year for us because it is our 50th anniversary, which is a lot easier to say, by the way, of our therapeutic recreation services program. I would like to extend an invitation to all of you to join us on November 21st for a gala celebrating, so that you can experience the happiness and the warmth that we get every day from our participants in our therapeutic recreation services. With that, I will present this resolution to our therapeutic staff.
Great.
And I thank your staff, the Board, for allowing us to make this presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bellis. And just let me say on behalf of the Board that I think we're all big fans of therapeutic services and our partnership that we've enjoyed over the years through our Parks Department, Regional Parks Department. Some of us will recall some of the fanfare that we used to enjoy years ago, when Epi Johnson would join us here in chambers, and we were in for a show, when Epi and his family presented big checks and made the Board of Supervisors do odd things at times, including me running around chambers as a clown. So, yes, it wasn't just me, it was also the rest of my colleagues. But, yeah, so certainly have fond memories of that, but all for a terrific cause, and I'm glad that we're at least annually recognizing therapeutic services as is, I think, rightful. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please. I assume we have no speakers on?
We did not have any speakers for that item, and so our next timed item is at 10:00 AM, so if it pleases the Board if we can do or consider the nominations and appointments for Boards and Commissions? So we have continuing to March 11th, the Children's Coalition, the County Service Area 4B, Slough House Wilton Kasumnas, County Service Area Number 4C Delta, also continuing to March 25th Cemetery Advisory Commission, the Disability Advisory Commission, the Elk Grove Kasumnas Cemetery District, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, and the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Commission, the Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, the Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, continuing to April 8th Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Use Advisory Board, the Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and the Veterans Advisory Commission, and the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council. So that brings us to today's items. The first item is the Adult and Aging Commission. Chair Serna?
Please continue to March 25th.
Thank you. The Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, District 4, so Supervisor Rodriguez, you have seven seats.
Please nominate Kathleen Stewart Beck.
Okay, and you have six other seats. Would you like to continue those to a meeting date?
Yes, please, till March 25th.
Thank you. Then we have the County Planning Commission. Supervisor Rodriguez, you have one seat.
Please appoint Tim Vruga.
Okay.
Please waive the process.
Second.
And that passes unanimously. The Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, there's four seats. Chair Serna?
Chief's recommending the nomination of Amy Brown, and continuing the remainder to March 25th.
Thank you. The Human Services Coordinating Council, Chair Serna, there's four seats.
Please continue to April 8th.
The North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Desmond, you have two district nominations.
Please continue to April 8th.
The Public Health Advisory Board. Chair Serna, there's three community seats.
Please continue to March 25th.
And the Recreation and Park Commission. Supervisor Rodriguez, you have one seat.
Please nominate David Benebento.
Thank you. And the Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Rodriguez, you have four seats for District 4 nominations.
I'm sorry, can you repeat which one that was?
This is the Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory?
Please continue to March 11th.
Thank you. And the Sacramento County Youth Commission. Supervisor Kennedy, you have one seat. And Supervisor Rodriguez, you have one seat.
Please continue to March 11th.
And the Sacramento Environmental Commission. Chair Serna, there is one seat available.
Please continue to March 11th.
And the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Supervisor Hume, you have one District 5 nomination.
Please continue to April 8th.
Thank you. And the Sheriff Community Review Commission. Supervisor Hume, you have one District 5 nomination.
Also continue to April 8th.
Thank you. And that concludes our Boards and Commissions nominations. We could also move to on-ranks, if you'd like.
Sure.
So item number 63 is Board of Supervisors 2025 Appointments From Own-Ranks to the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. The Clerk's Office is looking today to make an appointment and a change due to a bylaw amendment change to the GSEC, and so currently seating is the public sector member listed as County Executive, David Villanueva, and then has the appointed member as full servant, and the appointed alternate as Rosario Rodriguez, Supervisor Rodriguez. And so the bylaw amendment change lists a director and an alternate, and so we are looking for a nomination and appointment to that today. And so the bylaws state that we shall have one single voting representative to serve as director, and so the director under that paragraph shall be the highest-ranking non-elected official with the government entity.
Okay, so I would nominate David Villanueva?
Okay. And then additionally for that, then the highest-ranking non-elected official shall be permitted to delegate his or her position as the director to the highest-ranking elected official with the government entity.
Entertained. Well, I have someone pointing a finger at me, so I'm happy to serve in that capacity if it's the will of the Board.
So I would just need a motion and a second for that?
Move to nominate Chair Serna as the delegate.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I had a question. Are we, well, I guess we're going to need to vote here, but I had a question. Are we the only jurisdiction that does it this way on GSEC? I mean, do the other cities within the county appoint the, I guess, the either city manager, I guess it'd be the city manager, to represent the municipality?
So I think this came, I think this came up because over the last year, at least when Supervisor Kennedy was the chair, I had some questions about the communication coming out of GSEC and why it wasn't including the chair as you guys, the member being appointed. As we took a deeper dive into GSEC's bylaws, they presented that information to us. So that's one of the reasons why we're making this change, because we had clarification on the bylaws. Some cities and counties within the GSEC area appoint their city manager, their county executive. For example, I know Rancho Cordova, it selected Council Member Sanders is their representative. So no, it's both. It's both opportunities for either representation. I don't know that there's any difference in the representation as far as who goes. I go to the meetings, and I know the district representative of certain activities that GSEC is doing, or open to all of you if they have a certain type of study mission that they go to. So I think it's, to answer your question, I think it's all over the board.
Okay. I know it's their.
Sorry for that long answer, too.
It just seems unnecessarily, it seems like to me it should just be the chair, and if the chair wants to delegate someone in the chair's absence, I mean, that would make more sense versus being the county exec and you delegate it to the chair. But, okay.
I agree.
Record that vote does pass unanimously.
Okay, very good.
And I?
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, so I asked the question weeks ago, and please, Mr. Villanueva or Madam Clerk, please jump in and correct me if I have this wrong, or my colleagues if they think otherwise. But I believe we have confirmed that we can in fact have nominated, and then if, again, the will of the Board, selected alternate to serve on the RT Board of Directors, should, and that alternate would have the opportunity to sit at a meeting, should one of the three members of the Board be absent. Is that the understanding of the CEO and the Clerk's Office?
That's my understanding. I did talk to the Executive Director of RT, and they did say they do allow alternates. They have allowed. did say they do allow alternates. They have allowed alternates, and I believe it was, I'm sorry, this was several weeks ago that I looked at it, but there's one organization that had an extra seat put on, and they kept their alternate. And so we can appoint an alternate. I just don't remember if the procedure required RT to allow the alternate or for us to assign an alternate.
Okay, so let's do this. For the next meeting, for our next convening, let's get clarity on just the sequencing, what has to happen first, whether it's an action that has to be taken by the RT Board, or B, it can be handled administratively, or C, we have to act first and then them. So let's get that clarity. I'm sure the clerk will note this interest. But for the record, today, I would like to, I know we're not going to nominate, but I would like to just put forth the fact that I believe Supervisor Rodriguez has already expressed an interest in the alternate seat, in fact, serving on RT period. And I know she's an avid light rail rider, all the way from Folsom at times. So I would just kind of plant that in the minds of my colleagues for consideration when we do come back and if we do take formal action as to selecting an alternate.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you.
Okay, on to our next item.
Item number 54 is to approve the issuance by the Sacramento County Water Financing Authority of Series 2025 Revenue Bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $80 million, and approving the forms of and authorizing the execution and delivery of the related documents and directing and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Thank you. And there is a presentation today.
Just a moment, my computer is not acting, it's not responding. There we go.
Great. Good morning, Chair Serna and Supervisors. Today, I'm Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer. Today, I'll be presenting on the recommendation to approve the issuance of the Series 2025 Water Revenue Bonds. The 2025 Water Revenue Bonds will fund the completion of the Ardent Service Area Distribution Realignment and Meter Installation Program and Two Treatment Plant Recoding Projects. The recommended method of sale is a competitive sale, and as it is the first to be recommended within the county, I'll be providing the reasoning behind that recommendation. The benefits and considerations that are looked at when making a choice between a competitive sale and a negotiated sale, as is consistent with counties and the agencies' adopted debt policies. A competitive sale will bring maximum price transparency, often pricing lower than that of a negotiated sale. It does not require an underwriter RFP process and has lower issuance costs. Consideration for a competitive sale are lack of underwriting support in a volatile market, less structuring flexibility than a negotiated sale, and it does not have a formal marketing period. Alternately, a negotiated sale benefits include banks that provide underwriting capability in volatile markets, a marketing process that can assist in generating investor demand. In some instances, a strategic use of a syndicate can reach a variety of buyers, and there's an ability to reprice to achieve lower spreads, and an ability to customize the couponing and other structuring elements of the pricing. Considerations for a negotiated sale are that pricing levels are often higher than competitive sales. The RFP process for the underwriting team adds time and the financing schedule as it carries a higher cost of issuance. The method of sale recommended is the competitive sale primarily for the following three reasons. The size of these bonds lends itself to a competitive sale. A bond size of about $500 million would not be recommended for a competitive sale. The water agency has been in the market a couple of times within the last six years with the 2019 issuance and again in 2022, making it already known in the market. And finally, competitive sales are commonplace in the finance industry for high-quality water revenue bonds, as water systems are viewed as essential systems. The county's water agency bonds are rated AA- as affirmed by S&amp;P this morning, placing it in the high-quality bond classification. Additionally, the county has access to some very recent comparable data from a water credit that issued bonds competitively sold this morning. That deal received 14 bids with favorable results, and the term, size, and final maturity are very similar to the deal that we are planning to structure. In most instances, county staff would recommend a negotiated sale due to the size of the deal, the frequency in which the county or the credit enters the market, and oftentimes there is a greater story to tell with the credit, and there is a desire to have a more robust marketing period. On this final slide, I'll go through the estimated numbers. We are looking at a par amount of approximately $63.7 million for a project deposit of $61 million, a capitalized interest fund that will fund debt service through December 2026, and cost to deliver the bonds. These bonds will be fixed-rate, tax-exempt bonds with a final maturity of little over 30 years from now. The source of repayment will be the water system revenues, and it is not a pledge of the general fund. And the current rates that have been approved will be sufficient to maintain the required debt service coverage going forward in the near term. The key to all of this is to say that even though these bonds will be competitively sold, the bonds will be sold as a very standard structure. For timing consideration, should the board approve this item today, we will be posting the preliminary official statement tomorrow with an expected pricing date of March 4th and a closing date estimated to be March 19th. This concludes my presentation. With me today are Brandon from Oric, the county and water agency's bond counsel, Camelia from the Sacramento County Water Agency, and Fred Dilly of PFM, the county and agency's municipal advisors. We are all available to answer any questions you may have. And finally, I ask that the board consider staff's recommended actions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions of staff? Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Colin, I don't need to spend a lot of time on this, but I nerd out on this kind of stuff. So I'm just curious, if going to the competitive sale process, are there factors in the current market that compelled us to want to go that way? Is this, we're dipping our toe in the pool, and this will be the new way we conduct business? What implemented or what?
Each issuance, we really will look at it on an issuance-by-issuance basis. The market right now is pretty strong and favorable, but really, it's the credit that we're issuing. It's a water revenue bond. You know, the structure is very standard. There's not a real deep story to tell behind the bonds, and it's got a good credit rating. And the size is very important as well. You know, anything around that $500 million mark, you wouldn't be wanting to go out and have a competitive sale. So this deal lends itself well to that competitive sale process. Okay. Well, I hope it goes well. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public's time to speak on this matter?
We do not.
Okay, entertain a motion at this point.
I'll move item number 54.
It's been moved and secured. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 55 is Fiscal Year 2024-25 Quarter II Sacramento County Welcome Homes Presentation. You are acting as the Welcome Home Board of Directors.
Good morning, Chair Serna and Supervisors. I'm happy to be able to present the Quarter II information for our Welcome Homes Board of Directors meeting. I'd like to first start by thanking each of you for your continued support as we navigate this endeavor, which has never been done before in our county. We appreciate your continued partnership and look forward to your continued help in helping us to improve our services as we continue to support youth in our community. I also want to take a moment and thank our DCFAS team. There's several members, many of whom are here today, who do incredible work around the clock to ensure that our welcome homes are operating efficiently. So I did just want to take a moment and give them acknowledgement.
Melissa, before you continue, just for the public's benefit, maybe you can introduce yourself and your title.
Absolutely, yes. I'm Melissa Lloyd, and I'm the Deputy Director. I oversee Child Protective Services under the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So for today, on our agenda, we have several items, and I'd first like to start with some really great news. We have added an administrator, a second administrator, through repurposing department resources. We were able to do this. She is here today with us, Alicia Wesclowitz, and she works under the supervision of our initial administrator, Kathy Johnson. Alicia, the reason that we added the additional administrator, and again, we will be seeking your approval for that, is that Alicia will, her role, she will have more presence in the homes directly, and will be able to assist supervisors and staff overseeing the day-to-day programming and providing training and modeling to our staff. We'll go next to our operating budget and fiscal statement. This is a snapshot up on the board. This is a snapshot of our fiscal year 2425 budget for all three welcome homes. I'm happy to share that in November of 2024, we reduced the number of welcome homes, Sacramento County licensed welcome homes, down to two. This shows the budget, quarter-one actuals, quarter-two actuals, and the remaining budget for the fiscal year. You'll notice that over half of the budget is allocated to staffing. The next largest budget category is contracted services, which make up about a fifth of the budget. Our security services contract with the Sheriff's Department makes up the bulk of this line item, along with training for staff and youth recreational activities and mentorship programming. Finally, our operating expenses and overhead make up the final amounts, respectively. These include facilities costs, supplies needed to feed and care for the youth, indirect costs needed to operate, and other minor miscellaneous expenses. Not all expenses are reflected, as there are sometimes delays in receiving the invoices timely. Moving on to staff training and safety, our training plan, this slide outlines the quarter-two trainings that took place for our staff. The training plan was revised to align with the requirements of community care licensing and was submitted to community care licensing January of this year. Initial key areas of training will continue to include shadowing opportunities for staff to understand programming, assessment and coaching of staff for understanding of program goals, and all areas of support they may need to help further develop their skills. Continuing with staff training and safety, this slide outlines our future trainings. We are training to policy. Prior to the policies being developed, we did do training due to the need as we were creating the supports and services within the welcome homes. I do want to share that we do have a plan for all makeup trainings for staff who may not have been able to make their scheduled training. We'll move forward to our demographic data. This slide demonstrates that between October 1 and December 31st, there were 85 unduplicated youths served in the welcome homes. Of these, you'll see that 58% identified as female, 41% male, 1% transgender. Notably, 61% were children or youth of color, black, Hispanic, American Indian. 14 of the 85, or 16%, were probation involved on an informal status, and the average age of youth during quarter two was 13. We also see that, on average, the daily census was 11 youth across all welcome homes, and the average length of stay was six days. At the last Board of Directors meeting, the initial one, there had been an ask for a comparison of demographic data between our welcome homes and that of our partners, Progress Ranch and Children's Receiving Home. This is point-in-time data that you see on this slide. You will see that Progress Ranch and the Receiving Home both have considerably smaller populations over quarter-two than the Sacramento Welcome Homes. Sacramento, again, had three homes for half of the quarter. Progress Ranch had one home with six beds, and the Children's Receiving Home had one cottage with three beds, which began October 30th of 2024. Moving forward with the demographic comparison, this slide shows a comparison between genders, between the youth we serve at the Sacramento Welcome Homes and those of our partners, Progress Ranch and the Children's Receiving Home. Progress Ranch has primarily served girls, and Children's Receiving Home has been focused on boys. I am happy to share also that today, the Children's Receiving Home opened a second cottage, and will be taking, they'll have capacity for three more beds. And that may still focus on the male gender. For the discharge data, this slide shows where are youth discharged. Out of the 103 discharges, and a reminder that some of these are duplicate kids, the most common discharge location was unauthorized absence. So the way that we have to report for licensing purposes is that when a youth goes on an unauthorized absence, it still is considered a discharge. And this is basically the youth leaving the welcome home without authorization. Roughly 1 in 5 youth, or 19%, left, was discharged to one of our other partner locations, Progress Ranch or the Children's Receiving Home, and 19 youth, which equates to 19%, exited to a family member. And that included parents, relatives, or non-related extended family members. 47% of our youth were discharged to home-based settings, and 16% returned to a parent or guardian, 14% went to a foster family agency, 2% went to a relative, 13% to a county resource parent, and 2% were discharged to congregate care with therapeutic supports, 3% discharged to youth detention facility. Again, due to a request of this board during quarter-one, we did create a slide for you to show the data on the discharge comparison. And again, the numbers are smaller because the population of our partners' capacity is smaller than what we've had.
Excuse me, Melissa.
Yes.
We have a commoner question from Supervisor Desmond.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Melissa. So I understand during this reporting period, there's been, we've been kind of a state of flux, right, going from more welcome homes and entering into additional contracts. And as you mentioned, now the Children's Receiving Home has opened the additional cottage. Will, at some point, when those things kind of stabilize, will you, in future reporting periods, also compare our discharge results in the current reporting period with prior reporting periods? Because I don't think, I don't see that in here. You have the incident reports comparison between, I think, reporting periods, but do you have the discharge data comparison between reporting periods?
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you would like us to show between quarters what those discharges look like?
Correct, just so we can see the progress. Right.
Sure. We can absolutely do that.
I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Okay. Now we will move on to the incident report data. So this slide depicts the incidents that we reported to state community care licensing over the past quarter, October 24 through December of 2024. You'll notice there were a total of 192 total incident reports, and that 134 of those were for the unauthorized absences. So those are, as a reminder, when kids go on an unauthorized absence, that does fall under an incident report that we do have to share information on with community care licensing. The remaining 58 incident reports were due to contraband, hospitalizations, injury The remaining 58 incident reports were due to contraband, hospitalizations, injuries, substance use, and medical emergencies. You'll see this data folded into the incident types listed below. It should be noted that some events are categorized in multiple incident categories, so incidents should not be interpreted as solely separate events necessarily. This period, the majority of the incidents occurred at our girls' location. The second location, since we have closed that third location, saw the second largest number of incidents. While we did have our third location, which again, has since closed, we had the fewest incidents at that location. There were unfortunately, three incidents this quarter that resulted in injury to staff. The incidents included one youth hitting a supervisor in the face, a youth hitting a staff in the back as she climbed through a window with a puppy, and a youth hit a staff in the jaw when staff was attempting to help calm the youth down.
Melissa, before you leave the slide, are we tracking any incidents involving suicide ideation?
So in terms of, those will fall under typically, what will happen with those, Supervisor Serna, is they will result in a hospitalization. And so they are tracked, and then those incident reports that hold the qualitative data, all of that information goes to community care licensing.
Okay. So I mean, I would imagine that has to be a pretty acute case in terms of how it manifests itself if you're going to hospitalized someone. I assume it's on a 72-hour hold.
They will be put, and that's where our supports, the mental health supports that we have through contracted providers really help. We, as a reminder from the information presented at quarter one, we have kids immediately connected, referred to mental health services. Despite some of those services, we will have some kids who are having a lot of challenges with their mental health. And so it's case-by-case circumstance. And so we will have supports and services from different contracted providers, who the kids are involved with. We typically will have, it's very routine for us to work, we do a lot of work hand-in-hand with Tim Lutz's team, Department of Health Services. So we also have CPS mental health liaison that helps us with those circumstances. So at the point that something gets to a chronic circumstance where we will need to call for assistance, kids, if they are taken to the hospital, they are typically put on a hold. And then from there, we work with our area hospitals to determine a proper discharge plan for the kids. So we also have been doing, my team, along with Mr. Lutz's team, has been doing a lot of teaming, if you will, with area hospitals in regard to protocols at hospitals and working with them, again, on proper discharge plans and getting mental health services to those kids.
When you keep saying hospitals, so I'm assuming it's not a Kaiser, it's not, I'm assuming it's a Puff or it's Schmick? I mean...
Some. Some kids will go to the mental health treatment center, but there are times when kids will be taken to the emergency department of area hospitals.
And I'll just add, if you recall, one of our behavioral health applications we've submitted to the state for the BHCIP is for youth-related services. So we will have a youth-related Puff that we're putting at formerly the WET Center as well. But we do contract with youth facilities for psychiatric care as needed.
Okay. And are the youth that unfortunately present this way, are they, how are they transported? Is a first responder notified? I mean, this introduces all kinds of other challenges we currently have at the moment relative to law enforcement, but on the fire life safety side...
It depends on the acuity of the youth and what's needed at the time. Sometimes staff can transport, and sometimes we do rely on first responders. So I understand your line of questioning. We have been in touch with the sheriff's department, who hasn't changed their protocol around transports for youth at this point, and we will continue to monitor that.
Okay. If we're going to have future check-ins relative to this data, I'd like to kind of have us track maybe, or at least, it sounds like you already are tracking, but maybe call it out separately. Just, I think it's good that we understand whether or not there's any kind of unfortunate trends, or I think everyone's very sensitive at the moment to how the county generally responds to reports of individuals, whether they're youth or adult, that are presenting as a threat to themselves or others.
Absolutely. We'll track that. Thank you.
Okay. And on this slide that's up now, this was the incident report comparison that was asked for. And so you will see that we've noted here the data from both Progress Ranch and the Children's Receiving Home for quarter two. Unauthorized absences were also the most common incidents for Progress Ranch. And for the Receiving Home, it was both unauthorized absences and medical or behavioral health needs. But again, a very small population.
Excuse me, Supervisor Desmond?
Sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Melissa.
No, it's fine.
Once we start, we just can't stop.
It's fine.
But no, and this is great. I guess my same comment applies here, you know, prospectively, if we can compare it by reporting periods, I think that'd be great. It also looks like the reporting categories may not all be consistent, so you'll be trying to do that.
Yes. We addressed that. We have addressed that with our partners. And so this was the way that they are tracking information. They too, being licensed facilities, have to send information into licensing. And so one of the things my team and I talked about was working with our partners and our internal team to make sure that the items are all the same.
Great.
So we can do comparisons.
Apples to apples, yeah. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. And next, we have the community care licensing reporting data. This slide depicts our other interactions with community care licensing, and it compares, this one does compare quarter one to quarter two. We, of our four facility evaluation reports this past quarter, we were cited for nine items to correct across the three homes, and many things were duplicated across the houses. Items we were asked to correct included being over capacity, incident reports being sent in timely to licensing, training completion, and we had a smoke detector where the wires were cut and needed to be replaced. There were five complaint investigations that were brought to our attention. Of these, one was unsubstantiated, two were substantiated, and two are still pending a conclusion. With the two that were substantiated, I did want to note, those were circumstances where we did have children under six in the home. The licensure of welcome homes does not, at this time, per the state, include the opportunity to serve kids under six years old. We have had some parenting minors who have been in our care, and we have been transparent with community care licensing that we will take their minor child in with them to help keep them together and serve them wholly. This next slide depicts where we were at the end of quarter two with our policies and procedures. We have eight policies that have been identified and are being written. They're at various stages of approval process for policies. We do work with our labor partners to move toward these policies being finalized, and that's a work in progress ongoing to complete our policies. Next, I'll talk a little bit about our placement capacity expansion. I'm very proud of this work, and I do need to give acknowledgement to Department of Health Services for their extraordinary support with DCFAS as we have worked together. Additionally, we have multiple community partners that have come forward. We even have partners that were out of county, who because of the work that we're doing in Sacramento County, have been interested and attracted to coming and working with us on our local capacity expansion efforts. So I do believe that deserves acknowledgement to both our internal county partners at DHS as well as our community partners. The overall plan is to increase local placement capacity for kids who have a higher acuity of need. To give a little bit of a refreshing respectfully to Supervisor Rodriguez, we have historically had to have a lot of our youth go out of state because we didn't have that local capacity. And so these efforts that we have been working on the past year-plus have really helped us to create more local capacity, which includes emergency-enhanced intensive services foster care homes. That's where we can have kids go up to 60 days. Enhanced intensive services foster care homes, where there's a placement for nine to 12 months. The work that I've already highlighted with our contracted providers for our contracted welcome homes through Progress Ranch and the Receiving Home. We also have a third partner coming onboard April 1, who will take over the girls' home as a contracted provider. So we plan to be down to one welcome home, Sacramento County Welcome Home at that time. And then we also have partners, one local partner and one who came from the Bay Area to do contracted short-term residential therapeutic supports to increase our capacity there. This slide gives where we were. It shows the data of where we were at the end of December of '24. And at that time, you'll see our total number of active capacity was 46. That's 46 additional beds in our county that have been created through this effort. I'm happy to share that as of today, we've increased by one more, so we're at 47. And then you'll see what our goals are. So we literally, at this time, have 24 more beds among these variety of these partners, 25 more beds that we should have. And so quarter three should produce some happy data in this area. I do, that's the end of our presentation. I do want to share a couple of points that I think the board will appreciate. We have continued to prioritize relative engagement and relative placement. Last year, from January 24 to January of this year, we increased our relative placements by nearly 14%. Additionally, the number of kids in foster care continues to decrease. From January of 2024 to January of 2025, we decreased the number of kids in foster care by almost 26%. And I'm available, as is our team, for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. As usual, very informative and responsive to past inquiries, and I'm glad you ended with some very positive information. And I know you and your staff are going to continue to do what you do best and really focus on making sure that we appropriately grapple with the challenges around placement, certainly. But I'm really, really encouraged to hear, especially the family placement numbers going in the right direction. All right. Before we get to comments and questions from board members, and we have all four of my colleagues in the queue, I just want to ask the clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak on this matter?
We do not.
All right. Very good. We will start with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. With everyone being keyed in, I'll try and keep this brief. But on slide seven, you have the demographic, you don't have to go back to it, but you have the demographic data that lists the number of kids, the youth, unduplicated, duplicated, total discharges. And then on the remainder of the charts, in which you just mentioned relative to the decrease year-over-year, some are numerical values and some are percentages. Is there, do you have anywhere that I missed where we talk about the total number of children served?
Well, I had shared in the very beginning, Supervisor Hume, the total number of youth served, I want to say it was 184, but I will look, oh, we, no, excuse me. There were 85 unduplicated youth served in the welcome homes during quarter two.
Okay. And so that's during quarter two. How would one extrapolate how many youth get served in a year? Or some way that we're, I'm trying to figure out how I would break down how many total children, I mean, I would imagine...
I understand.
Because the unduplicated youth and the discharges number don't match up, there are some who got discharged in quarter two but started to be served in quarter one or even before.
Right.
Right? And so is there a way to kind of get that?
We can, we can put that together, and I'd be happy to, we will put that together and send forth, and happy to send it to all of you. It is a bit complicated, just in terms of understanding it, it's complicated for us as well, because we will have, that's why we talk about duplicated versus unduplicated. And we do have kids who will discharge successfully, and then a couple months later, they're back in our welcome homes. So we will determine a good concise way to put that together and send it forward, so that we give kind of that year-long snapshot.
That'd be fantastic.
Perfect.
And then would that apply both to our welcome homes as well as our contract providers?
We can do both.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate it. And then I just want to say, just kind of as an aside, I really appreciate the work that you and your staff do in this area. It's not an easy task that we're charged with. I don't think it's optional in any way, shape, or form, and so it's really meeting the needs of a pretty significant, but, you know, hopefully, small demographic.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Supervisor Kenny?
Thank you, Chair. Unless I don't have any questions necessarily, I just want to also echo what Supervisor Hume said as far as thanking you and commending your staff. We've come a long way in a short period of time. I actually had an opportunity to visit the two welcome homes and found them accommodating, clean, efficient, you know, professionally staffed, very impressive, and you're to be commended, as well as your staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Rodriguez?
Melissa, I want to thank you for, you and your team for the work that you do, because anytime we see children in compromised positions like this, I think it's really hard, not so much on our regular day-to-day jobs, but also the issues that we see and that leave an impression on our hearts. I also want to say that I think looking at the data year-to-date would be very beneficial. And also, can you elaborate on the 26% reduction of children? Is there something that has led to those positive numbers?
Yes, actually, we, I believe, we are doing a better job every day at engaging with families and really determining what is a true safety issue that requires separating family. And with that, we are very fortunate in our county to have supports upfront in our emergency response division to be able to still serve families who may need some case management oversight. So we have that program of informal supervision. But overall, in our county, I think what is working well is doing further engagement with families, really bringing them to the table to help them share what is occurring with them, and really doing better and better work around is an issue that comes forward for neglect, something that can be ameliorated with some additional supports for a family, really focusing on where we see bias in the work that we do. So there's a tremendous amount of work going on across our division to address this and be accountable to families and children in our community around really, first and foremost, determining what they really need, determining if there's a true safety issue. There are circumstances that include physical and sexual abuse that are going to bring kids into the system. But overall, really doing better work. And then while we are working with families, really kind of our commitment is leaving families better than when we first started working with them. Even if there's a circumstance where there was no harm being done, how do we help connect families to community? How do we help them understand what's directly in their community? And if there's not a service in their community, how do we help provide them some education support and a little bit of hand-holding if needed to get them to a service that may help them now but may also help them in the future? And really allowing for those that they identify as family to be brought in to... And really allowing for those that they identify as family to be brought in to the discussions around how we further help them, again, in the moment and then also for their future.
Thank you.
Before we get to Supervisor Desmond, if I could please, I just wanted to take an opportunity to follow up on that a bit, given your response, Melissa. When we have the opportunity to place a youth back with family, is there an expected or almost automatic involvement of our family resource centers? So in other words, given where, you know, what the address might be of where the family lives, identifying which of the nine family resource centers is closest? And do we have supports that are actually set up there that they could take, you know, advantage of in terms of parenting classes, what have you? I mean, you might have a youth, for instance, that, you know, goes to live with aunt and uncle, not, you know, mom and dad.
Right.
And maybe the aunt and uncle don't have children and so, you know, all of a sudden they are the custodians of, you know, the family custodians of that youth. Seems to me that we have a tremendous amount of resources at our FRCs. So just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Yes, absolutely. And that really goes into the comment I made about really helping families. And it's not just that nuclear family that we may be working with, but who their family is comprised of, to understand the resources in their residence, area of residence. And so there are times with across the spectrum, a lot of times, like historically, the resource, family resource centers were really looked at like for upfront and trying to mitigate child welfare involvement. And there's tremendous service that our family resource centers do in that area. But additionally, what we've been pushing in our division is that everyone can benefit from our family resource center, even if they're people who are adopting, people who are moving into a guardianship with children from their family. So family resource centers at every, kind of every program within our division, our staff are helping to connect family to those. Some of our families are very familiar, just depending on where they live. But we do share with them that it's not just, family resource centers have that component of home visiting, but they have so much more, as I believe all of you know. So really getting families connected to those resource centers, but also getting them connected to other community supports, depending on what their needs are.
And I would just add too, I think we're all very much aware and proud of the fact that at our FRCs, they are not just doing the great work you just identified, but they're doing it in a culturally competent manner. So I think, again, I'm just, you know, not a big fan of what goes on at our FRCs and I'm glad to understand a little bit better with your response that we are in fact taking advantage of all the services offered there. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll just, I'll also echo the thanks from my colleagues up here. I mean, it's been, it's a great discussion and I think it's a reflection that we all understand this is among the most vulnerable population we serve and one of the most important things that we do as a county. And it's great to hear the success or the improvements that we're making, both in family placements and overall, and that's just absolutely wonderful. And who's that new contractor going to be when we convert from a county welcome home to a contracted one?
Oh, the next one onboard is Foster Hope.
Foster Hope. So it'll be Progress Ranch and Foster Hope and then the Children Receiving.
And the Receiving.
It'll be the three contractors. Okay. And I also want to throw a shout out there again to Melissa, like I like to do. You've been extremely responsive to issues that do come up with constituents or residents who live nearby and resolving those. And we've been able to do that. I'm sure that's going to continue with the contract operators as well.
Yes.
So just thank you to you and Shelby. You're inheriting a really great program and wonderful staff and thank you for everything you do.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
All right. Very good. Again, Madam Clerk, no one signed up to speak on this matter. We do need to adopt a resolution, so I'd entertain a motion at this time. Chair will move. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved to second. Please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 56 is the Sacramento County Local Age and Disability Friendly Action Plan.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Serna and members of the board. I want to thank you for allowing us to present for your approval our Sacramento County Local Age and Disability Friendly Action Plan. I am Melissa Jacobs. I am your Deputy Director for Senior and Adult Services for, in our Department of Child, Family and Adult Services. And so you'll hear from me briefly as well as our contracted consultant, Mike King. In 2023, Sacramento County community was comprised of about 441,000 individuals who were living with a disability and/or were over the age of 60, which was about 28% of our community. And by 2030, we are anticipating that about 30% of our community will be comprised of individuals living with a disability and/or are over the age of 60. And future population projections are showing us that our older adult population is continuing to grow and that will soon outpace our younger, the number of younger people in our community. California has been preparing for this change in population with its implementation of the California Master Plan for Aging since 2021, when that was released. But Sacramento County has also been preparing for this demographic change as evidenced by this body, our board, your support in approving our ability to opt-in to being part of AARP's network of age and disability-friendly communities in fall of 2019, November 2019. Since that time, we've navigated an unprecedented global pandemic and have emerged with renewed enthusiasm and excitement for this project. And the team at Senior and Adult Services has worked tirelessly over the last few years to bring us to this point today. And with that, I want to go off script just a second and thank and acknowledge three retirees, folks who, since this was on your agenda, have retired or announced their retirement and were integral in this work being initiated. And so our former director, Michelle Caíes, you may know her. Ruth McKenzie was the Senior and Adult Services Division Manager when this work started. And then Heidi Richardson was the program planner who initiated and led this work. She is here today. And without her commitment and passion for serving older adults and individuals with disabilities, that work, this work would not have continued. So I want to thank them and acknowledge them publicly. Thank you. In alignment with the state's Master Plan for Aging, the California Department of Aging offered local grants to local communities for us to be able to create our own local plans. And in all of her wisdom, Heidi applied for one of those grants and Sacramento County was awarded $200,000 to help us build our local plan. And it, the timing of it worked seamlessly and was in alignment with our age and disability-friendly work that we are already doing. So we went to work with your approval to procure a contractor and executed that contract with Pear Street Consulting at the end of 2023. And in 2024, an additional 13 community listening sessions occurred for a total of 26. An advisory committee was formed and met regularly and we heard from over 500 community members. And they, along with the advisory, shaped and created the plan presented to you today. So our project lead, Mike King, will be sharing with you a high-level synopsis of the recommendations that we intend to work on over the next couple of years. And in 2027, we will begin that five-year cycle of listening and review and assessment of our community needs to contribute, to continue to build upon the work of supporting older adults and individuals with disabilities to live in our community and to thrive and to continue to be contributing members for Sacramento County's future. So as part of that planning process, Pear Street Consulting initiated a celebration event that will take place March 17 at the Sacramento State Ballroom to acknowledge the achievements and the work done so far. I think all of you, it's in partnership with the Gerontology Department at the college. I think all of you received a save the date or an invitation. We'd love to see you there to celebrate this work in our community. And with that, I will pass it over to Mike.
Thank you, Melissa, and good morning, Chair Serna and fellow board members. Thank you for having me today. As Melissa mentioned, my name's Mike King. I'm a project manager with Pear Street Consulting and it's my pleasure to present the Local Aging and Disability Friendly Action Plan to you today. The Local Aging and Disability Friendly Action Plan is a five-year strategy document for intentionally and systematically making communities across Sacramento County more livable for older adults, people with disabilities, and their caregivers. The plan fulfills Sacramento County's requirements for membership in AARP's network of age-friendly communities and for its grant from the California Department of Aging. Strategically, the plan aligns with the California Master Plan for Aging's five bold goals, which were on a previous slide. So the county is positioned to receive funding and collaborate with state initiatives moving We are proud that the plan is community-driven and responsive to what we heard is important to a diversity of residents across the county. While affordable housing and access to affordable transportation and healthcare are core priorities for your communities, this plan also focuses on strengthening the existing age and disability services system in Sacramento County by addressing another core priority, which is communications and information. Through our engagement, we learned that too many older adults and people with disabilities simply do not know about the existing services available to them. And so this plan proposes to remedy that. We propose to implement a county-wide age-friendly and accessibility awareness and celebration campaign that promotes the Aging and Disability Resource Connection, or A D R C, as the No Wrong Door System Navigator. The Aging and Disability Resource Connection of Sacramento County opened its doors in July 2024 and is operated by the Agency on Aging Area 4, with whom the county has a joint partnership agreement. The A D R C is a free, accessible, and centralized resource for anyone seeking information, guidance, or assistance accessing long-term care services and supports. We want to strengthen the age and disability services system by driving more traffic to the A D R C. Next, I want to highlight that creating livable communities for older adults and people with disabilities must also address the biases of ageism and ableism that exist in public spaces. The plan proposes to start with the business community by implementing an age and disability-friendly business program that helps businesses and organizations to implement hiring policies and practices that support disabled and older workers, to adapt their customer service strategies and consider how to offer discounts to older adults and people with disabilities, and to also help them plan for accessibility improvements, whether that's online or to physical storefronts. The plan complements the A D R C as the No Wrong Door System Navigator by proposing to implement a multicultural, multilingual, multi-ability, and multi-agency Better Together SAC outreach and engagement program that ensures resources and information are also accessible to non-English speakers, people with disabilities, and other isolated populations. The A D R C Awareness Campaign and this Better Together SAC outreach program come together as part of a series of branded, interactive, and accessible age and disability-friendly Sacramento County community events across the county. These events would be designed to build awareness about new age and disability-friendly efforts and resources, to build trust with and empower marginalized and isolated community members, to foster social participation among these populations, to collaboratively generate solutions, as we did previously through the many listening sessions that we had across the county, and then also to communicate and evaluate progress on the action plan as well as the county's ADA Transition Plan and A D R C goals. The plan also addresses a myriad of transportation needs identified by empowering the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services to identify and collaborate with relevant existing agencies, advisory committees, and task forces involved in implementing transportation, active mobility, and wayfinding projects to ensure stakeholder voices are consistently represented and greater levels of accessibility and affordability are achieved in our transportation system. And this is especially in the more rural areas of Sacramento County where the transportation, where the transportation needs are the greatest. The plan also proposes a solution to ease the cost of caregiving for many households and to help keep older adults and people with disabilities in their chosen homes for as long as possible. By implementing a countywide village program that connects volunteers with older adults and people with disabilities in need of assistance, we can help fill the gaps in existing formal and informal caregiving systems and resources. We know also that the city of Sacramento is simultaneously exploring their own village program. So we should work collaboratively with them to address caregiving needs across the county. And then finally, the plan proposes to address a myriad of housing and healthcare needs by giving the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services the flexibility to build partnerships and help scale effective emergent solutions to housing affordability and accessibility as well as the cost of long-term care. Of course, there is lots more detail about each of these proposals, recommendations, and the needs we heard from residents and service providers throughout this planning process in the action plan itself. I hope this was a useful summary and at this time, welcome your questions and any comments that the board may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions from my colleagues? Don't see any. Again, thank you. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do. We have several members of the public that are signed up to speak for this item. The first is Dawn Angelo.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Dawn Angelo and I serve as a Sacramento Regional Director for AARP. I am here on behalf of the more than 139,000 AARP members in Sacramento County to express our support for the Local Aging and Disability Friendly Action Plan. AARP is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering people to choose how they live as they age. Locally, one of our top priorities is promoting the creation of livable communities and we are strongly committed to helping build age-friendly communities across California and our nation. We know the more connected and engaged people are with their community, the more likely they are to age successfully and remain living in their homes as the vast majority wish to do. That is why AARP California has worked alongside public officials, community leaders, and residents across the state and here in Sacramento County to plan for and enact that will improve the lives of older adults and people of all ages and abilities. To date, more than 100 California cities and counties have enrolled in AARP's age-friendly states and communities, representing nearly 2/3 or over 28 million of its population. Enrolling in the network provides municipalities with the framework to address critical issues like affordable housing, transportation, mobility, and reducing social isolation. And as you heard, California's population is aging. By 2030, 1 in 4 Californians will be 65 and older, and by 2035, the number of adults over 65 will be greater than the number of children under 19. Perhaps it is these statistics that inspired the Board of Supervisors to join the network and support the creation of the plan that is before you now. As a representative for AARP and as a member of the Sacramento County Adult and Aging Commission, thank you for your commitment to older adults and their families throughout the community. Thank you.
Ms. Angelo, don't go anywhere. Supervisor Kenny.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Dawn, I just wanted to thank you and AARP. Most people don't realize how much you do behind the scenes as far as public policy for elderly people. And I want to thank you for, you know, continuously sending me those cards in the mail to remind me how old. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Pam Miller.
Good morning, Chair Serna and the board. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak this morning. I'm Pam Miller. I'm the Executive Director of the Area Agency on Aging. We serve Sacramento and six surrounding counties. I was honored to be part of this process of your laid up. First, I want to commend you as a county and as a board to be forward-thinking enough to come up with an action plan that focuses on older adults and people living with disabilities. Oftentimes, these are overlooked populations, but as you can tell, they're going to be a very large. a very large population going forward, so I want to thank you for that. And I also want to comment on selecting the Aging and Disability Resource Connection to be part of this plan. The A D R C in Sacramento, I believe, is one of the strongest A D R Cs in the state. The core partners are my agency, Resources for Independent Living, and the Asian Community Center. And I think the three of us work really well together, and I'm looking forward to the great work that we're going to be doing in the future on this. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Pam.
And our final speaker today is Sari Tataporn.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Member of the Board Supervisor. I'm here, I have two hats. One hat, I'm the President of Able Community Development and Foundation, and the other, I'm the Member of the Cali Aging, Adult and Aging Commission. I would like to thank Supervisor Kennedy that nominated me and all of you approved my nomination and have been serving on the commission in the last eight months, nine months. So, I'm here to bring to your attention as we, I do support the plan, okay? And I commend the staff and the consulting agency, or affirm that helping to develop your plan. But as you can see, there's over 400,000 senior population in the Cali. When I look at the detail of the plan, one thing that touched my, you know, my heart or my consciousness is about the limited English-speaking population. There's about 27%. Now, these day, everything is online. Everything's online. So, and I'm part of the limited English-speaking community. I had seen people quite a lot. And also, my immediate family had 11 seniors, including myself, my wife, my mom, my brother. And I have seen a lot of them struggle to access to the services because of their language barrier, and that would mean you had to be able to speak English or navigate the internet or visit the website or try to access, try to navigate the system. If you cannot do that, so you are blocked, you are sidelined, you will miss. Because the other thing, the other thing, I actively involved with the National Council on Aging, and they have what they call Benefit Participation Map. And they focus on three benefits. One is SNAP, the other is SSI, and the other is Manicure Management, Manicure Saving Programs, something like that. Sacramento County had 40,000 people who are eligible for SNAP program, but for whatever reason, they don't enroll, they don't participate. And also, the other, the percentage is only 20% as far as the county is concerned. So, as we try to implement the plan, I want to see the county that look at, you know, because there's a lot of them, there's 400,000 over there, of that. But unless we use the microscope to pick and shoot, or to concentrate on, or spotlight to concentrate on certain population, many of them can miss, you know, the opportunity. So, I'm here to support the program overall. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and really appreciate all the speakers. I'm happy to move approval of the resolution adopting the LAIDAP and have staff begin the implementation process. But starting with Melissa and AARP and the Area Four Agency on Aging and the Adult and Aging Commission, you know, appreciate all of your work. Again, another highlight of the county's, the importance of our role in protecting another very vulnerable portion of our population. We started talking about the young in our county, and now we're talking about those who are older and with disabilities. Something I want to make sure also to put on our radar, I'm looking over at Dave DeFonte and Todd Smith, as the Land Use Authority for such a large part of Sacramento County, I think we need to really always be looking at ways we can either incentivize and attract more housing options for seniors in the unincorporated area. I just talked to Siobhan yesterday about a visit I had with some people who are running residential care facilities, and we talked about the acute need of more residential facilities like that. In my district, anyway, a much, an older population in these older unincorporated areas, they don't have many options once they're not able to afford, to be able, not just an affordability issue, but just not being able to keep up their home. Their option is to go into an institutional-type setting or move somewhere else out of the county. So, I think we really need to take advantage of us having that land use authority in such a large unincorporated area to get more options for seniors, both affordable and market rate. So, thank you again. I'm a big supporter of your work and all aspects of it today.
Great comments. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, second the motion, but I also want to echo some of the comments that were just made. Unlike the presentation on Welcome Homes, where it's a very limited demographic of folks that present a high need and sometimes get more attention paid to them, this is very important work, and it's important to have this plan laid out. And even if we are able-bodied, God willing, we will all be a part of this demographic. And so, it's very important. I want to thank you for the work that you do. And I also appreciate getting that card in the mail that reminds me how old I am.
I think many of us do. And with that, I know there's a motion and a second on the floor. We've heard from members of the public, so thank you for your testimony this morning. Just remind folks to, something I take advantage of is every first Tuesday of the month, 20% off at Walgreens if you qualify 55 or older, so keep that in mind. All right. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And that motion passes unanimously. Item number 57 is a presentation of pilot project for installation of flashing yellow arrow signal indicators.
Good morning, Chair Serna, fellow board members. My name is Melissa Jones. I'm the Principal Civil Engineer for our Design Section at the Department of Transportation. I'm here to talk to you today about flashing yellow arrows for left-turn operations. So, there are several different kinds of left-turn signal operations. One of those kinds is permissive mode, which is making the left turn yielding to oncoming traffic. We usually see this when it's a solid green ball, but it can also be a flashing yellow arrow or a flashing red arrow. We also have what we're all familiar with in our county right now is protected mode, which is making a left turn on a green arrow. We have protective-permissive mode, in which both modes can occur on an approach during the same cycle. And we have a variable left-turn mode, which can change among the modes. We can be from protected, go to protected-permissive, or even to permissive during different times of the day, or as traffic conditions warrant. The flashing yellow arrow is identified in the California DMV Driver Handbook, and it is an operation that's used throughout the United States, including California. It offers more opportunities to make left turns when traffic volume is low in one or more directions. It can help the county meet the goals of the Climate Action Plan by reducing emissions by 9 to 12%. It also can reduce intersection delays and still retain the function of the protected left turn when needed. And it can be programmed to operate by time of day or even time of season based on vehicle detection, or based on vehicle detection in the turn pockets. The flashing yellow arrow is becoming more and more common in our area, in our region. The city of Roseville first implemented these in 2019, and they currently have 14 installed. They also have a goal to install four per year at existing locations, and the locations are chosen based on feasibility, engineering judgment, and citizen requests. The city of Elk Grove has installed 10 of these and are looking to install more in the future, as is the city of Sacramento, which currently has three left-turn yellow arrows and two right-turn yellow arrows. Our department will develop certain criteria for determining the locations that we would install these at. And we have identified two pilot locations in the Arden Way corridor to install these. We would implement them together to enhance exposure and education for drivers in the area, and those locations on Arden are at Professional Drive and at Morse Avenue. And the implementation of these would coincide with our Arden Way Complete Streets Phase One project, which just started construction. We're planning to perform extensive public outreach to inform the constituents of this new signal operation. We'll have an informational brochure that will be mailed out, as well as posted to our website. We've also developed an informational video that will be posted on the website. We'll have temporary signage posted on the roadway prior to activation to alert drivers in the area of the upcoming change in signal operation. We'll also have permanent signage on the signal mast arm to instruct drivers to make the left turn yielding to oncoming traffic. And we would also coordinate with the various media outlets in the region to cover the pilot locations prior to activation. The flashing yellow operation would only be used when certain criteria is met for any given location. It would not be activated if a pedestrian movement is being served on the conflicting movement. It will be deactivated at locations near school crossings at certain times of day, such as drop-off and pickup, and it would be deactivated to allow for protected-only, the solid green, with a simple change in timing and programming. So, we would be installing these at locations that we can monitor through our Traffic Operations Center. And in closing, I just want to acknowledge Doug Moss, our Senior Civil Engineer, who's been very instrumental in getting us to this point. So, with that, I can be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Any questions for staff? Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Not a question, but I live in the jurisdiction and was on the board at the time when we approved them, and I got to say that these have a little bit of a learning curve, but they function very well and allow for a better movement of traffic when the light would otherwise keep things congested.
Yes.
Learning curve was not lost on us here. Supervisor Desmond.
I'm supportive as well. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to make sure that our DOT Director, Ron Vicary, will commit to joining me at the community meeting I have after we start this, so I can redirect all the constituents, regardless of how much public outreach you do, there will still be those who will be upset. So, I appreciate you outlining all the efforts you're going to be making in that regard. So, thank you.
All right. Very good. Okay, so, we do have to adopt a resolution. Is there a motion?
I will move to adopt the resolution to approve the pilot project.
All right. It's her second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, any public testimony?
There is none.
All right. Very good. Please vote.
Thank you all.
And that item passes unanimously.
Thanks again. Next item.
Item number 58 is to adopt a resolution implementing Senate Bill 937 requirements regarding the timing of collection and development impact fees for affordable housing projects. We introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 16.80, 16.81, 16.83, 16.84, 16.85, 16.87, 16.91, 16.100, 16.150, 16.152, 16.155, and 16.160 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the timing of collection and development impact fees. Also waive full reading and continue to March 11, 2025 for adoption, and direct the county, Deputy County Executive for Community Services to take all other actions necessary to comply with Senate Bill 937.
Great. Thank you.
Did that include 16.83?
It did. It did.
Good morning, Chair and fellow board members. My name is Claudia Wade, County Engineer for Sacramento County. As introduced, I am before you today regarding SB 937, which is a bill that went into effect on January 1 of 2025. This requires a collection of impact fees at final inspection or certificate of occupancy rather than at issuance of building permit for affordable housing. In order to implement SB 937, staff is requesting the Board adopt a resolution to implement SB 937 and adopt an ordinance which amends the various chapters which were read, containing the affected impact fees. We are also asking that you empower the Deputy County Executive for Community Services to create policies and administrative procedures for implementation. Staff is also asking if the Board would like to, for staff to come back at a later time to review the feasibility in extending SB 937 for all other residential projects. If the Board so desires, we can come back to the Board with an analysis of potential financial impacts, which could affect developer reimbursements and impacts of the construction, the timing of construction of CIP projects. Expanding the program could help provide relief to developers from a cash flow perspective, as well as stimulate housing production, which is consistent with our goals in removing barriers to the construction of housing. That concludes my presentation and is available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Claudia. Any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public sign up to address this matter?
There are no public comments.
I will move the recommended actions.
Okay. It's been moved. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
All right. Very good. I believe that concludes our morning calendar.
It does.
I will just note that we are remarkably close to our posted schedule, so I think things are going well in terms of being a little bit more efficient with our meetings. And I want to thank the Clerk in advance for all her help in that regard. Okay, we do have closed session, so we will then adjourn to closed session remaining Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, February 25, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and reestablish the quorum?
Good afternoon, Supervisor Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Very good. First item, please.
Item number 59 is the 2026 One-Year Action Plan Federal Program Allocation Process Workshop Number One.
Good afternoon. Christine Weichert with SHRA. And I know we have a PowerPoint. There it is. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry, I'm looking right at it. Today is the first workshop for the County of Sacramento's 2026 Annual Action Plan. The workshop provides information on several federal programs and an opportunity to solicit project ideas. I'll start with providing a brief overview of the program requirements, estimated 2026 amounts, examples of past projects, and then the schedule moving forward. SHRA administers the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, home and emergency solution grants, or ESG, programs on behalf of the County of Sacramento. HUD requires grants recipients to complete a consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan that identifies the community needs and strategies to meet these, and the strategies to meet these needs. In addition to the consolidated plan, HUD also requires that we prepare an annual action plan, which identifies specific activities and projects that will be undertaken. The next, I'm sorry, the next slides focus on CDBG funds. The slides show the objectives that were developed in the past consolidated plan. Overall, funds are to help create opportunities for low and moderate-income residents through three different avenues: affordable housing, public facilities, and infrastructure and public services. In addition to meeting the CDBG objectives, we must also ensure that projects meet the HUD national objectives, and these include activities that benefit an area, which means a location that's primarily residential, and at least 51% of the residents must be low and moderate income; direct assistance to low and moderate-income individuals or households at or below 80% of area median income; and low and moderate-income housing. Eligible CBG activities include public facilities and infrastructure, like community centers, playgrounds, streetlights; public services, such as meals and wheels or other shelter operations; acquisition of land for eligible activities; clearance and remediation activities; and planning administration. Ineligible activities include general government buildings and expenses, operating and maintenance, purchasing of equipment, new housing purchasing of equipment, new housing construction, political and religious activities, and regional parks and facilities. The key word here is regional. A park or facility must support, that has CBG must have a neighborhood benefit. I should note that there are other things that we need to look at when looking at CBG projects. One of the most important factors is project readiness. We have an obligation to HUD to expend the funds in a timely manner, so it's important that we select projects that are ready to go and that can be completed in 12 to 18 months. So, we typically receive the current year's approval, approved budget amounts from HUD in April of each year. So for planning purposes, we base the estimated entitlements on the previous years, so in this case, 2024. As you know, Congress has not yet approved a 2025 budget, so our 2025 allocation amounts may be announced later than usual. In 2026, we're estimating that we will receive approximately $5.9 million for CDBG, and we just reviewed the activities those funds can be used for. For home, we expect $2.9 million, and home typically goes to construction of new multifamily affordable housing projects. And for ESG, we estimate $500,000, and these funds help people who are homeless, for example, through rental assistance in an operation of shelters. So overall, that's about $9.3 million. For CDBG, the annual entitlement is divided amongst several categories. This table shows how the funds may be utilized. For estimating purposes, we will allocate the maximum allowable amount for both public services and administration, and then work backwards from there to determine how much is available for other categories. We are allowed to allocate a maximum of 15% to public services, so that's about $885,000, and we usually see those funds go to the Mather Community Campus and Meals on Wheels. A maximum of 20% for planning and administration, this is used to pay for staffing, planning, and fair housing activities. About $2 million will go to infrastructure and public facility improvements, and $1.3 million for affordable housing, and these funds go to multifamily rehabilitation and home repairs for low and moderate income homeowners. About $400,000 to set aside for projects in agreement cities, which are Folsom, Iolton, and Galt. And the last category is capital reserve, which is a contingency. The next blue shot, sorry, the next blue, I can't even talk, few slides list the infrastructure projects funded over the last five years by supervisor district. The slide lists parks and, this slide lists parks and infrastructures, projects in Districts one and two. The next one is District Two, which primarily were pedestrian and park improvements. District Three, we had a lot of complete street projects and park improvements as well. There's a theme with parks. And District Four, parks and lighting improvements. And lastly, District Five, which are projects primarily in the Delta and Rosemont. So, the final slide here outlines the process to identify projects for 2026. SHRA has initiated the process of meeting with county staff to discuss project ideas. We are currently holding our first action plan workshop, and in June, we should have a draft list of projects, and we'll come back to present those to the Board of Supervisors. Through October, we'll finalize the action plan, and we will come back to the Board of Supervisors in October for approval and submit the plans to HUD on November 15th. So that concludes my presentation. Once again, we welcome any input you might have on action plan projects either now or anytime before the next workshop, which is scheduled for June 3rd. And if you have any questions, we are here to answer them.
Great, thank you, Christine. I know that Supervisor Kennedy is in the queue. I'm going to ask a question before we get to him, though, first. When it comes to the public services piece that you mentioned, 15%, I think it was.
Correct.
How rigid are the guidelines for use of Community Development Block Grant funds if the service provider, not necessarily the service, but the service provider is in a, is in the incorporated limits of a city, but we know and we could document the fact that services are broadly applied or offered to both residents in the unincorporated county and the, within the city limits? And I'm talking specifically about our Family Resource Center located at the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative. It's a very odd geography, as you're well aware, where the collaborative is in a converted, repurposed elementary school site that is literally an island surrounded by unincorporated area. And you and LaShelle are painfully aware that every, every time this year, as it applies to District One, I always feel like we have the greatest challenge to really find ways to effectively use, you know, available CDBG funding because of the uniqueness of the district in terms of it being primarily the city of Sacramento. So this is something that I don't think I've asked before, but I know you know me to be very probing when it comes to creative ways that we might, of course, stay within the guidelines, but seek to help, whether it's infrastructure or public services, to assist the residents in those communities.
I would say that if it was a capital improvements, which I don't think is your question, but then it would not be eligible. But for public services, if you can demonstrate that it's being, the recipients are from a wide area, including an unincorporated county, that could possibly be eligible, yes.
Okay, that's certainly something that I would like you to note and have us explore, of course offline, but that, to me, that the fact that we have the Family Resource Center located where I mentioned, I think offers us a unique opportunity to think about how we can maybe assist with their, their mission and their budget. So Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Christine, I'm going to ask you, I'm not asking you to crystal ball it, but are we hearing anything as far as funding being threatened by the current administration in Washington?
For these programs, we haven't heard anything specific, no. That said, because we do not have even a 2025 budget allocation, I think there's a lot of unsurety about the situation, for sure.
So like everything else, we're on pins and needles?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions for staff? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone from the gallery that wishes to address us on this matter?
I do not have any public comment.
All right, very good. This is presentation only, no action. It's a workshop, so again, appreciate the information, Christine, and I'm sure all of us look forward to one-on-ones with you and LaShelle in the coming weeks to nail down how we're going to allocate the CDBG funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item?
Our next item is time for 2:30 PM.
Look how efficient we are. All right. Seeing as we've already blown through our nominations and appointments on ranks, I don't believe, Madam Clerk, that we have other perfunctory matters in front of us that we could use those 18 minutes for.
Nothing for the 18 minutes.
All right, well, then you get 18 minutes back. We are in recess until 2:30. Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and reestablish a quorum?
Thank you. Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Okay, next item, please.
Item number 60 is PLMP 2024-00065, Moore Vice South Avesting Tentative Subdivision Map Resubmittal and Design Review for a Property Located Approximately One Half Mile From the Intersection of Bradshaw Road and Ballenger Drive in the Vineyard Community. The applicant is Pearl Consulting Group Incorporated, APN 0660070049. The environmental document is an addendum.
Good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon. Emma Patton, Senior Planner, here to present the Moore Vice Southeast project for you. So the project site is located approximately one half mile west of the intersection of Bradshaw Road and Ballenger Drive in the North Vineyard Station specific plan area. Project site is shown here in red. The map shows the project site in the context of other proposed and approved subdivisions in the North Vineyard Station specific plan. It might be kind of hard to see on this exhibit here, but this sliding, this property in green is our subject site. The project site is Zoned Residential Five and Recreation and is near the constructed Vineyard Point subdivision to the south, the recently approved Spring Garden subdivision to the east, and the approved but unconstructed Moore Vice Southwest subdivision to the west. That Moore Vice Southwest subdivision is currently in the process of being recorded. The proposed map is a resubmittal of a expired map. The Board first approved the Moore Vice Southeast entitlement package on June 25th, 2007. This entitlement package established the property's specific plan, land use designation, and its zoning. That map, though, ultimately expired on March 6th, 2023. So although the current proposal is referred to as a resubmittal, it is considered a new map that is subject to our current ordinances, policies, and standards. With that, the applicant is requesting the new vesting tentative subdivision map and a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. I do want to note that as this is a vesting map, it is subject to the Board's review and approval. Typically, a tentative subdivision map only goes up to the Planning Commission. The vesting map is a form of tentative subdivision map, which confers a vested right to proceed with development consistent with the ordinances, policies, and standard, and standards in effect at the time of the vesting tentative map's approval. So here is a slide showing the proposed map. The proposed map would result in 102 single-family residential parcels, two landscape lots, and one park parcel. Primary access would be off of Fourth Street to the north. Fourth Street is being constructed in phases as subdivisions are constructed. That Fourth Street will continue on connecting west over to Waterman Road. The park parcel is situated at the northeast corner of the property. It's a 1.7 acre site. I do want to note, though, that it will connect to the park and open space site located over to the east at the Spring Garden subdivision, which was recently approved. I'll also note that staff worked with the applicant team on several changes to this map from its original version. Those changes resulted in increased public access to the park site and a decreased number of backup lots and sit on lots to that park site. There's also additional access roads and a reduction in the number of dead end courts. There are a few documents relevant to the environmental review for this project. When the North Vineyard Station specific plan was adopted in 1998, an EIR was prepared that identified significant cumulative impacts resulting from development of the plan area as a whole. Subsequently, a project-specific initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the original Moore Vice Southeast project that determined that the project would not have significant impact on the environment with the implementation of mitigation measures. For this current proposal, an addendum was prepared to the previous initial study and MND. The addendum concluded that no substantial changes are proposed in the project, which would require major revisions to the previous MND. The project was presented to applicable advisory bodies. The Design Review Advisory Committee met on April 25th, 2024. Drak members felt the proposed circulation improved compared to the original map and recommended that the Board find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. The Vineyard CPAC met later on May 9th, 2024. No public comments were received during this meeting, and CPAC members supported the project, voting three yes, zero no, one absent to recommend its approval to the Board, by the Board. And then the Planning Commission met on December 16th, 2024. No public comments were received, and the Planning Commission voted three yes, zero no, two absent to recommend that the Board approve the requested entitlements. The proposed project is consistent with county ordinances and policies, including applicable general plan policies. The project is also consistent with the policies of the North Vineyard Station specific plan, its development standards and design guidelines, as well as the zoning code. All required tentative map findings can be made. And finally, as conditioned with the implementation of required mitigation measures, there are no significant environmental concerns. So based on the analysis today, and as further noted in the staff report, staff recommends that the Board determine the previously adopted mitigation, negative, mitigated negative declaration, together with the CEQA addendum, is adequate and complete, that you adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, that you approve the vesting tentative subdivision map, subject to the findings and conditions, and that you find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Emma. Any questions for staff? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone from the public that wishes to address the Board on this matter?
We do not.
Okay. In that case, entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the recommended action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
And of course. Well, we're getting better, right? All right, so we will be in recess till 2:45. Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and reestablish a quorum?
Good afternoon, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
Still here.
All right.
Next item, please.
Item number 61 is PLMP 2019-00209, Nueva Vista Congregate Care Facility, an Appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval of a Use Permit, Minor Use Permit, Special Development Permit, and Design Review for Properties Located at the Southwest Corner of Roosevelt Avenue and 47th Street Intersection in the South Sacramento Community. APN number is 0200301002003006007011013 and 023. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you.
Thank you. This project is PLMP 2019.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sorry, my apologies. I'm Leanne Mueller with Planning and Environmental Review, project planner for this project, and this project is 2019-00209. It's the Nueva Vista Congregate Care Facility Appeal.
Very good.
Thank you, sir. This project is located near the southwest corner of Roosevelt Avenue and 47th Street in the South Sacramento community. The project site does consist of seven parcels that are developed with an existing congregate care facility, single-family residences or duplexes, or are vacant. This area is a mix between the city of Sacramento and the county of Sacramento. The subject parcels, which are in the red hash here, are, have the zoning districts of RD5, RD15, and RD20. The surrounding land uses do consist of single-family residences with RD5 and RD20 zoning, and in the city of Sacramento, which is located here. And here, it is a mix of single-family residences with R1, and there is a community center to the west. In 1996, the zoning administrator granted a use permit, which allowed the expansion of an existing residential care facility to a maximum of 49 residences, residents, on approximately 1.14 acres. This use permit is active for that facility at 4604 Roosevelt Avenue. The site does contain four existing buildings that are proposed for reuse, and then they will add an additional 11 buildings, and then there are no active code enforcement cases on this site.
Can you, can you tell me, tell us whether we've had any code enforcement actions in the past?
There has not been any code enforcement.
Thank you.
So the entitlements before the So the entitlements before the board are a use permit and a minor use permit to allow the expansion of that existing congregate care facility to 140 beds on approximately 3.35 acres. It is also a special development permit which does deviate from some of the development standards of the zoning code as follows. They're asking for a reduced rear yard setback for Buildings 9 and 10, which would be the proposed new dorms. That setback is 10 feet versus 25 feet. There is a section along one of the properties where it's adjacent to a neighboring use where they were asking to not have screen trees along there. However, at the planning commission, the applicant did submit a revised landscape plan which does put those screen trees back in place, so this special development deviation may not be necessary. They are also asking for some reduced landscaping in the parking area, and then no landscaping around the trash enclosure. One of the other deviations that they are also asking for is along Roosevelt Road. For a 27-foot section, they're asking for a masonry wall to be placed there rather than what would be normally required, which would be like an open ornamental fence. This would be adjacent to an outdoor activity area associated with the existing congregate care. There's also a design review which would allow for a reduction in the required parking spaces from 56 to 48, and to comply with the countywide design guidelines. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project pursuant to CEQA, and it was released in June of 2024. The environmental document did analyze impacts to transportation, traffic, air quality, hydrology and water quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and greenhouse gas emissions. Mitigation measures are proposed for nesting raptors and migratory birds, tribal cultural resources, native tree removal, and basic emissions control. And with the implementation of those mitigation measures, impacts would be less than significant. This is the site plan that the applicant is proposing. As you can see, this is the Roosevelt Avenue frontage here, and this is the 47th Street. You are looking at, there's the existing residences here and here. This is the congregate care building, and this is another existing duplex building. And then you would have Buildings 5, which is proposed, which would be their main clinic building, which they're proposing to add. And then Buildings 6 through 8 would be a maintenance building, a clubhouse, and a community building. Buildings 9 and 10 would be new dorms that they are proposing. And then along this area here, you would be seeing four of what they're calling cottages. Two of them would be residential cottages. And then Building 13 and 14 would be smaller clinic buildings. All the new structures that they're proposing are one-story in height, and they are proposing outdoor amenities such as courtyards and patios that are being provided. The applicant is proposing to construct in three phases. So Phase 1 is ending up being the development of the parking areas and the counseling building and some of the amenities. And then the second phase would be the new dorms, and then their community building, and then the last phase would be those cottages. These are the landscape plans. I briefly mentioned it in the special development permit. This is what we had been carrying forward, and this is what the applicant had proposed. The planning commission, as you can see, they do have screening around the perimeter of the property, and this version does have additional screening here and then here.
Before you leave that slide, the driveway, if I'm not mistaken, is a one-way driveway?
It is a one-way driveway.
Okay.
It enters off of Roosevelt and goes out on 47th.
Right. And from this illustration here, is, is there going to be like decorative paving and part of the driveway? It's, I see the stipple there, and I'm not sure what that is, what that is supposed to render. What is, do you understand what I'm looking at?
I think it's generally indicating that there's a paving. I don't think it's like indicating necessarily decorative.
Okay, all right. That was, that's unclear just from the, kind of the nature of the illustration.
Okay, and this is intending to show you the overall design of the buildings that the applicant is proposing. They're, for the majority of the buildings on site, they are going to be looking like this. So this project went to the CPAC on May 19 of 2021 to consider, to hear and consider the project and make a recommendation. For this project, there were six written comments and four verbal comments that were received. There was one comment that was in support, the rest were in opposition. The neighbors' concerns that were expressed was that the community experiences an oversaturation of health and human services uses in addition to other social services issues and undesirable activities in this area and community, that the project would detract from uplifting efforts or potential of the community, and that the presence, and the presence of the facility in the neighborhood would decrease property values. The neighbors feel unsafe with the presence of that facility. Ultimately, the CPAC did acknowledge the neighbor concerns, and they voted to recommend denial to the planning commission of the proposed project. The CPAC further voted to authorize an appeal of the item to the Board of Supervisors if the planning commission approved the item, which is why we are here today. The project also went to DrAC in 2021, and the DrAC did review the project, the design, and ultimately, they recommended that the project be found in compliance with the design guidelines, and that is their recommendation. The planning commission heard this item on September 23 of 2024. And prior to that hearing, there were seven written comments that were received supporting the project and none in opposition. The planning commission did have questions for staff and the applicant as to calls for service, care mode, staff-to-patient ratio, and then the priority to serve county residences. We would note that a detailed summary of the applicant's answers are provided in the board report. And at the conclusion of the planning commission hearing, they did vote to recommend approval of the item with an additional condition of approval that was added for the operator to maintain a point of contact with the neighborhood associations in the vicinity to be able to contact them with any issues or concerns about that facility. So this item was appealed by the Chair of the South Sacramento CPAC on October 3 of 2024. And in their appeal, they did provide the justification that the neighbors are concerned with the oversaturation of social and healthcare services in their neighborhood, that the facility has brought undesired activity to the neighborhood, and that the operator has not been a good neighbor. And then they also stated that the CPAC had voted to recommend to the planning commission to deny the project in 2021.
I want to make sure I heard you correctly. There was, there's been an accusation that they have not been a good neighbor? That was expressed?
That was taken from the appeal, yes. So the staff's analysis of this project is that, again, it is the expansion of the existing congregate care facility, which would occur through the adaptation of the existing structures on the site, and then the addition of new structures to provide 140 beds on 3.35 acres. Again, that would result in the construction of 11 new structures over three phases. This project is consistent with the general plan, community plan, and zoning code. And with the approval of the special development permit, it is consistent with the zoning code use and development standards, and the project is compatible with the surrounding uses as conditioned. We would also note that congregate care and other supportive housing uses do not have separation or concentration requirements in the zoning code. Therefore, the number or location should not be used as a reason for justification of this project. And we would also note that your board letter does contain details on the number of similar uses in the project's zip code, and then the calls for service and incident reports at the facility as well. So the staff recommendation for this project is to deny the appeal. Planning and environmental review staff does recommend that the board take the following actions: deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's approval of the proposed project; determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to CEQA is adequate and complete; adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program; and then approve the use permit, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report; approve the special development permit, also subject to the findings and conditions; and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. I can answer questions you may have. The applicant and their representative is here as well. And then I believe a member of the South Sacramento CPAC is here as well to represent the appeal.
Very good. Thank you, Leanne, for the thorough staff report. Before we continue, I'm going to look to county council and just remind me and us about kind of the appropriate way we want to orchestrate hearing both the appellant and the applicant in terms of opportunities for rebuttal, that kind of thing. I know there is some nuance to it.
Yes, so the appellant should have their opportunity to be heard next, and no time limit should be placed on that. Following them, the applicant should be heard, and that should end that comment portion, and then we can move to public comment.
Okay, very good. However, before we get to that, I do have some questions for staff, but not necessarily you, Leanne. I'm really kind of looking towards Siobhan and Mr. Lutz. I know that we are in receipt of a support letter in terms of the past use and the expected use on the property, kind of the mission of Synergy and what they, they have done at this location and what they hope to do in the future. So is there anything you'd like to share on the record verbally about kind of the need and why we are in receipt of a support letter?
Yeah, maybe I can just start, and then if Director Lutz wants to expand. You know, as, as the board has taken actions over the last several years to increase our continuum of care, understanding that we have vulnerable populations in our community that lack appropriate treatment and housing, we've been building out other opportunities for treatment and care and housing that would help support these vulnerable communities, including just hearing this morning about the local Aging and Disability Friendly Action Plan. So we've appreciated the board's investments and support in this area. Synergy has been a good partner with us, and we'd like to continue to work with them to expand these types of opportunities for our community to have safe and stable residence where they receive the care they need. And I'll see if Director Lutz wants to add.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Tim Lutz, Director of Health Services. I would just add to, as we build out our behavioral health crisis continuum, the, the types of beds that this facility provides is relatively unique and hard to, hard to find placements for. We have two providers in the county that we work with, Synergy being one of them, with these types of beds. And, and when you think about our behavioral health system as a continuum, and we, you know, look at acute psychiatric cases, and then you look at our subacute where people might be longer-term trying to recover, this is a pathway down, a step down from that higher-level intensive services that they would see at a subacute. One of our goals across all of our health programs and social service programs is really trying to create areas or spaces where people can live in the least restrictive environment possible. And this does really meet, meet that criteria and definition for where we would want to be continuing to see investments within our behavioral health continuum. And so we also would very much support the, the increase and continue to work with them. They've been wonderful partners.
Great, thank you. Again, another question for different aspect of what's in front of us, and I'm looking at Mr. Jones now. Just, I know that there's plenty of documentation in the, that joins the board letter for this, this action that we're considering today. There was brief mention of the fact that, I believe, Leanne said that there were no calls for service relative to our sheriff's department. Is there anything you can share in terms of just kind of the, the history of the, the use there being, you know, an attractant for criminal behavior or what, you know, maybe someone can share with us whether or not we've had any actual sheriff's reports or police reports that have made it to the, to the record?
None that I'm aware of, Chair, just the fact that there were no calls for service. So I got no indications that there were any chronic nuisance problems at that location.
Dave DeFanti, Deputy County Executive. What Leanne was referring to earlier was code enforcement cases, but there is some language on Page 8 of the staff report that does speak to sheriff department-provided data. And it does say that from January 1, 2023, to December 24, 2024, that's about a two-year period, there were 66 calls for service, and there's a little bit of detail there.
Okay. Is there any flavor to that? Do we understand the nature of the calls?
Let me read briefly here. Of those calls for service, 19 crime reports where the sheriff's office completed a report related to an incident were generated. 14 of those reports were for a missing person located.
Okay.
And some additional details as well.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, so we will now then hear from the appellant. So I believe that would be a representative from CPAC. And I will not put a clock on you, or else I'll be scolded by county council, so.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Burke Lucy. I represent the South Sacramento CPAC. I'm a current member and past chair of the CPAC. I represent the neighbors who overwhelmingly oppose the, the, this proposal to more than double this congregate care facility's capacity in an already distressed neighborhood. First, I have to say, this is very rare for us. I've been a member of the CPAC for 18 years, and this is the first time I've ever presented before the board. And second, I, I'm sorry, I was not able to attend last week's Revitalize South Sacramento Summit since I was out of town, but that is exactly what we want to see in South Sacramento, revitalizing more than these kinds of projects. And third, I do want to say, I applaud the mission of Synergy, and I think the, the neighbors do too. Just, we have a lot of concerns. In 2018, after, well, the, Synergy already had the, the plans to expand by 2018, and before an early CPAC workshop, they invited us to a site visit. I visited the site, and I believe Supervisors Kennedy and Serna did too at a separate time. I had no objections to the existing site at the time. When the applicant came before our CPAC in 2021, two things led to our unanimous vote against the project: the, the neighbor's testimony, and ironically, the applicant's response to that testimony. And our last meeting for this project late last year only continued to reiterate the issues that we've heard in 2018, and 2021, and 2024. As the neighbors pointed out, this neighborhood already has an 85-bed homeless shelter just a block to the north. They have a liquor store with vagrancy issues less than half a mile to the west, 106 low-income housing units just beyond that, prostitution along Stockton Boulevard less than half a mile to the east, and they reported problems with illegal dumping, boarded-up homes, and a high crime rate. The neighbors expressed concern that the facility has done next to nothing for the neighborhood in the last 10 years, how long, however long they have been in the property. And that more than doubling the number of beds at this facility would seriously affect their property values and safety.
Can I, can I interrupt?
Yes.
When you say that they haven't done anything, or I know you're kind of paraphrasing based on what you, what you heard, but when, when that reference was made, or continues to be made, that they aren't, they haven't done anything for the community or neighborhood, or, and they, and they're likely not to, I guess, what does that mean?
That means the applicant noted that they have, I think, in the, in the range of- That means the applicant noted that they have, I think, in the range of 20-something clients countywide that they are serving from Sacramento, from Sacramento County, from all of their facilities.
Okay.
I believe that means close to eight in this particular facility. The rest are from Solano County, Shasta, and Riverside County.
Okay, that helps me understand what that means, because I was thinking something completely different.
But also, in terms of, we asked about outreach, if they provided any kind of outreach to the neighbors to see if, you know, they notified the neighbors. And at first, they weren't aware of a neighborhood association meeting, and then one of the applicant representatives did say they attended it, and then the association said, but they didn't follow up or do anything, and they just attended. So that was essentially the extent of...
Thank you.
...for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Let's see. Over the years, in 2018, 2021, and 2024, we have consistently heard from neighbors truly invested in this community, all opposing this expansion project, including David Robards, who lives a block away, Alice White with the Fruit Ridge Community Association, Michael Blair in the neighborhood for 20 years, representing the Oak Park Community Association, Ardell Harrison, property owner and developer a block away for 37 years, and president of the Sacramento chapter of the NAACP. And we heard from Mr. Canook Israel, who has been in the area for 34 years and runs an urban farm less than a block away on Roosevelt Avenue, another project that we should be supporting in the South Sacramento neighborhood. He talked about a patient hitting up his 18-year-old daughter multiple times. And when confronted, the facility could do nothing but confirm that he came from their facility and restrict his privileges. Mr. Israel said that type of behavior happens often, just not necessarily from this facility, but that is the point. This neighborhood is already overburdened. In response to concerns over property values, the applicant pointed out property values can actually improve around their facilities, noting their facility in Morgan Hill was surrounded by houses in the $350,000 to $400,000 range that are now over $1 million. Morgan Hill is a small bedroom community of San Jose, but I think this makes our point also. The applicant confirmed that their Morgan Hill location is not in an impoverished area. So let's compare the two. In the census tracts surrounding this Sacramento facility compared to their Morgan Hill facility, if you had a daughter here, she is twice as likely to be born with low birth weight, five and a half pounds or less, suggesting poor nutrition, lack of prenatal care, stress, and mother smoking. She sees twice the rate of toxic releases, hazardous waste, and lead from housing here than in Morgan Hill. She sees four times the places where groundwater may be polluted. She sees five times the level of small particulate matter, which most affects children, the elderly, and people suffering from heart or lung disease, asthma or chronic illness. In fact, she and her neighbors can expect twice the rate of emergency room visits due to asthma than in Morgan Hill. She and her neighbors have twice the rate of households with no one over the age of 14 speaking English well. She, and she is 14 times more likely to reach the age of 16, be eligible for the labor force, and be unemployed. She and her classmates are twice as likely to reach the age of 25 with less than a high school education. And she and her neighbors are twice as likely to be both low-income, making less than 80% of the county's median family income, and severely burdened by housing costs, paying greater than 50% of her income for housing. And more specifically, to a facility that's treating in part sexual behavior, she is currently surrounded by 21 times more sex offenders in a one-mile radius than their Morgan Hill facility. As a parent, you likely feel your son or daughter can truly be exceptional, but if they have these kinds of disadvantages to start, then tell me whether you really believe adding up to 80 more mental health patients next door, across the street, down the block would not really matter to you. I'm not surprised the school chose to locate next to the Morgan Hill facility. I'm also not surprised their property values increased. The median income value surrounding the Morgan Hill facility is actually $1.6 million today, but actually, it's a lot less than the average $2.3 million value for countywide. The applicant reported in 2023 their contract with Sacramento County was for $2.5 million for close to 25 clients. That's about $100,000 per client. So at that rate, this expansion could mean up to $14 million, more than, in a contract per year. When I asked the applicant why they chose to ask for a 10-foot setback from a residential property instead of the required 25-foot setback, or why they had limited landscaping in the parking area, all I, I heard no site-specific reasons, just that they wanted to fit more beds into this property. And today, I've heard six more than the one we heard in the last meeting. I heard a neighbor comment that a reduced number of required parking spots makes sense, and I agree. It makes sense for this kind of facility. The rest is to be gracious, to serve more clients, to be less than gracious, to get more money with special concessions, because people in distressed neighborhoods tend to put up less of a fight. So the neighbors are legitimately concerned about property values, safety, and the applicant has done next to nothing for their neighborhood in the past, however many years they've been there. This facility serves only a small number of people from Sacramento County. Mostly, this project serves, again, people from Solano, Shasta, and Riverside Counties. You could keep those millions in contract dollars in other Sacramento County neighborhoods that are like Morgan Hill, just like one seven miles away across the American River, for instance, but not in this neighborhood. Enough is enough.
Thank you. Thank you for your 18 years of service. This, I suspect, was a statement that was conveyed in person at the planning commission as well?
No. I was not asked to represent.
Okay, but I assume you were well aware that there was a planning commission meeting where this was agendized?
I'm not the chair. I'm not aware of what the process was.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
I guess we'll hear from the applicant now.
Good afternoon, Chair Serna and members of the board. Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, representing Synergy Congregate Care. And with me today is Linda Kaufman, who is the Vice President of Development and Resident Relations, and she brought several of her staff with her, too, and all of us hopefully will be able to answer your questions. First thing I'd like to do is to thank our planner, Leanne Mueller, for her very thorough staff report and her hard work in getting us to and through the planning process to your board. On your desk is a handout that I delivered earlier. Basically, it's just a summary of the details of the project, and then some specifics about the facility, and several exhibits that, actually, some of these I'm going to show. So Nueva Vista Sacramento is an existing congregate care facility that you've heard about, serving basically vulnerable adults who are no longer capable of taking care of themselves. Without these kinds of facilities, these individuals would either be on the street or be significantly failing in their ability to maintain their well-being. And unfortunately, over the last five years, these kinds of facilities that serve these kinds of patients and clients, we've actually been losing these facilities over the last five years. The project before you is an expansion of an existing care facility going from 53 individuals to 140. And I have, just have a couple pictures that I want to show you. This is just, if you haven't been out to the site, I'll give you a feel for the quality of the material in the entrance, and this is the entry to the main facility. Also, staff mentioned that there are three individual houses where the residents can move to when they graduated further through their care process. Here's some examples of the quality of both residential living spaces and the gathering slots for the residents. If you have questions about their treatment model, this is kind of a summary of it, but Linda can walk you through any of the details you may wish to have.
Mr. Holloway?
And then lastly, another exhibit.
Hold on.
Yes?
The image of the cottage, the small house, you mentioned where clients can graduate to. That's still on the campus? That's not off-site, correct?
It's part of the campus.
Okay.
Yeah, existing residences that have been remodeled to allow for tenants who are ready to move on to live in smaller, less congregated, or less congested facilities. I think there's four residents per each home.
And those cottages are all within the fenced?
Yes, yeah. The facility will be fenced.
Gotcha.
Just so you understand real quickly, the brown areas, existing structures, and the sort of orangish reddish are future residential buildings that will be coming with the approval should it happen for this project. One thing that, and I've represented these kinds of projects before, and one of the things that's really interesting about this one is it's actually the first congregate care kind of facility that actually allows the residents to go out into the community and volunteer their time for the benefits of the neighborhood and the benefits of the overall South Sacramento community. And so this is a list of just the resident volunteer hours that have gone out in the last, in 2023 and 2024. One thing that I did hear from the appellant was that the project and is, makes no contributions to the community. So what I'd like to do is hand to the clerk, who will give to you copies of the outreach and the benefits to the community that have occurred in 2003 and 2024. I'm not going to put these on the screen, but there's basically two and a half pages of efforts by this organization and their staff. In addition to the residents going out into the community and contributing, this is a list of what the staff and their efforts have been. So I just wanted to address the issue of no contribution and not a bad, not a good neighbor. We have read the staff report, and we agree with the findings and the conditions of approval, and we are ready to receive your questions, any that you may have. And Linda Kaufman and I will be ready for whatever questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, Linda, why don't you come to the podium? And just so everyone is well aware, and for the benefit of full transparency, I did have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Holloway and Ms. Kaufman, as well as meeting with representatives from the South Oak Park Community Association and residents that live nearby. So I've had an opportunity to recently hear kind of both sides, but what I'd like to hear from you, Linda, so that everyone can understand it, is maybe a little bit more detail about kind of the nature of the clientele. So are, you know, what is their general disposition? What are they required to do in terms of, for example, maintaining their medication schedules, those types of things? So maybe you can enlighten us.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, sorry.
It's best to speak between the microphones. There you go.
Sorry, Brian. So our clients are typically ones, I think 80, 80 to 85% are diagnosed with schizophrenia, and then secondary diagnoses can, a lot of medical, insulin-independent diabetic, colostomy bags, hypertension, a lot of diabetic clients, some with intellectual disabilities, mild to moderate. So that's kind of the profile of the majority of our clients. They are coming from higher levels of care or an MHRC, a mental health rehabilitation center, like Crestwood that's on Stockton. So we are very careful about who we accept, if they're going to be appropriate for our level of care. One of the things that, you know, we've talked about and we support, so we have a medication room that is staffed all day long, and we're passing out the medications. So that means that we are watching clients take the medication, we're monitoring, we're tracking that. Some clients are on crushed medications. That's where we'll also give them insulin or metformin or their medical medications. Individuals that refuse their medication or do not want to take their medication, the first thing we do is try and get them into the doctor, our doctor, our psychiatrist, because we want to know why they are refusing their medication, they don't want to take the medication. It could be because they have side effects, because they sleep too long, it makes them shaky. Whatever those reasons are, we try and address. If they continue to refuse our psychotropic medications, then most of our clients are conserved, and so we can ask that they be sent to a hospital for stabilization, figure out what the medication is that's going to be best for them. A lot of our clients are on long-acting injectables called LAIs, probably 60%, so that means that our clients are medicated. I hope that answers that piece for you.
And that's, those are psychotropic?
Psychotropic medication. They do have the right to refuse medical medications. However, if somebody is so impaired that their blood sugars are going up to 350 or something because they refuse that, then that's another reason we would probably advocate for them to go to the hospital to be stabilized.
Tell me what, or share here what you shared with me one-on-one the other day about the lengths that your staff will go to to ensure that they are taking their required medications and that they are not ingesting illegal drugs.
So those are two separate things. So definitely at length, so we watch our clients take their medication and swallow. We're not the type of environment where we ask you to stick out your tongue. If we feel like maybe there is a chance of you not swallowing your medication, we'll have you eat some applesauce or crackers, something to ensure that you have taken the medication. And I will say that our clients do not need to be in a locked facility, but they also are not going to be supported so well on their own in their own apartment. Substance use disorder, we have a very strong, and Crystal and Miranda can talk about our dual recovery program. So one of the things we started recently, sorry, one of the things we started recently is having an ATF dog come on campus. We had our first, I don't know what you call it, search?
Sniffing.
Sniffing about two weeks ago, and that has been good. We, of course, notified the clients and the staff and everybody that this was going to be happening. We plan to do more of those visits. So with an enclosed campus, one, we're trying to make sure that no influences come on our campus, but we are specifically sniffing for meth, fentanyl, marijuana. It is a community that we are not allowed any drugs or alcohol on campus, staff or anybody, clients. But at the same time, we have clinicians on our campus, we have therapists, we have recovery coaches, we have peer support specialists, we have psychiatrists, all to support people, you know, getting better.
And thank you for that. What about their disposition generally, especially when they're, you know, they're taking what they're prescribed?
I would say the disposition and, you know, it's hard to mandate that somebody goes to their therapy appointments. However, if they don't go to their appointments, we want to know why, what's going on. So schizophrenia, one of the primary symptoms of schizophrenia is isolative. We want them to come out, we want them to go to groups, we want them to go on walks in the community with our staff. So in a way, we're hoping that they start engaging more. This is why Shiana, you know, does all these outreach efforts. This is why Shiana, you know, does all these outreach efforts to slowly, you know, groups of three, groups of four, that were slowly integrating people. Isolativeness, not wanting to get out of your room is probably more a concern than anything, to be honest, in that recovery piece.
All right, very good. Thank you. Don't go, don't go away here. We have other members of the board that have questions. We'll start with Supervisor Rodriguez.
Good afternoon. What kinds of crimes would disqualify an individual from residency at Synergy?
It's typically, is going to be the time since your crime. And so, we have had clients that are on mental health diversion, that they're supervised by the court. We have to send a report to the court if somebody leaves when they're not supposed to. And that's a court ordered. We can't put hands on, we can't do anything like that. And as you heard, we do have missing person reports. So we always try to know exactly where our clients are. You have three meals, two snacks, so those are check-ins that we're logging who's there. You have medication passes, that's four times, an additional four times during the day. And then at night, we are doing room checks from ten o'clock to eight o'clock in the morning, every two hours. And that's not a requirement by licensing, we want to know where our clients are. So I hope that answered your question. But we do have clients that if they leave, our clients are conserved. So that means they, we have to know where they are at all times. If we don't, that's when we file all those missing person reports.
Got it, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Lynda, for being here, and appreciate the conversation. A couple of questions I had for you. I'm looking at the Community Matters log. Can you tell me a little bit more about your, you talk about exercising jurisdiction over contact, conduct that occurs off-campus. Can you tell me a little more about your efforts to, I guess, control that or deal with issues that come up off-campus in the surrounding neighborhoods?
So, and you've already heard about one complaint, and we know about that complaint, and that's exactly how we want it to go. You come to our campus, you tell us about your concerns, and that person is no longer allowed access to the community voluntarily. And in that particular situation, we moved the client to another campus. So all of the things listed in our Community Matters and our Good Neighbor Policy, they were really followed to a T. And I think that's what we would like to have, is people come and tell us. Our phone number is on a poster board on the front, our website, all of those phone calls go to me and have for the last fourteen years. I mean, all of them. It's a lot of phone calls. So I am the website answer. If, so if somebody leaves the campus, we ask that they sign in and out, so we know how long they're going to be gone. Most of our clients go out with staff in group situations. If they're going to go for an overnight pass, you know, we have them sign that and kind of find out who they're going with and get that permission. So we have daily passes, we have signing in, signing out, and then we have overnight passes, typically with family.
Okay. And I appreciate that, and it's important hearing this directly from you. Are there ever any restrictions on residents, can they, you know, don't be in the surrounding neighborhoods? Do you ever impose any kinds of limitations like that in conjunction with any of your facilities?
There were some complaints or some concerns about our clients walking by some houses, so we asked that they walk on the other side of the street. You know, I'm not saying that's the one thing that's going to make everyone feel comfortable, but it is one thing that we could do.
But it's not, if, I would imagine, if, as problems arise, you can address it through this off-campus conduct policy.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, I may have missed it, I looked in the staff report and the attachments, was there, was there anything in here that showed the log for the number of incidents? Because it looks like in your Community Matters log, you have a, you have a very well-defined process for logging any one of these community concerns. Do you, is there anything like that in the, in the board materials relating to incidents occurring at this, that have occurred at this site?
So I would say one, one of the things, and I think this came out of the 2021 meeting that we had, is I, I think we've done activities, I don't think we were good at documenting them. So that's one thing that we're trying to do, is document our activities.
I'm talking more about negative issues or incidents, that's what I'm talking about. Did you have a log that recorded those?
Those are the community, those are the Community Matters, kind of a play on words there, but.
Right.
Yeah, so we try and manage those. The one that I know of personally, and we've all talked about as an organization, is the one incident that came up in October of last year. And I think from 2018 visitor, 2021, Mr. Lucy talked about an incident at a liquor store, one of our clients. I don't remember being told about that, who the client was. I don't know about that one. But yes, we try, and that is Crystal's responsibility to manage.
Okay, but any incidents with neighbors that are, a complaint about?
Right.
A facility or resident or something, that, those records are maintained?
Yes.
By Synergy?
Yes.
Okay, and last question for now is, you and I had this discussion, I think a little bit the other day, is the residents you serve are not all from Sacramento County, is that correct?
That is correct.
Where, what percentage would you estimate would be from Sacramento County at the, with, I think it's a hundred and forty beds is the proposal, correct?
Anticipating, this is what Supervisor Serna asked about also. We began contracting with Sacramento County Behavioral Health in 2021, so it was kind of right during those beginning stages. And I did want to make one correction, and I absolutely could have said this the wrong way or explained it. That, that $2.5 million is a pool of funds. That is not all synergy funds. It's a pool of funds for augmented boarding cares. So that, I just want to make that clear, that's not all synergy funds. So, I forgot your question.
Well, I just want to know, can we, what, do you have an estimate of how many of the hundred and forty beds will be filled by Sacramento County residents versus residents from outside the county? Any sense of what that might be? I'm actually asking you to speculate.
Honestly, I would have absolutely fifty, sixty, seventy percent of the clients, all Sacramento County clients. We're talking about right now about how we go into a different funding pool to support that. We've always, as the host county, we have always prioritized, I think we're going to put that in writing now, we've always prioritized Sacramento County clients. But it's been three years. And I would also like to go back to one of the comments that was made about, we're not a good neighbor, we haven't done outreach. In 2021, I mean, our complete campus was shut down for almost two years because of COVID. Maybe we weren't doing enough, maybe we didn't go to enough hybrid meetings. I think we're trying to improve that and the documentation for that also. I would love all Sacramento County clients to be there, you know.
Let me ask you a follow-up on that. So you have similar campuses elsewhere in Northern California. Do any of those campuses host Sacramento County residents?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's?
It's, yes, it goes back and forth. Whatever's the most appropriate place for that person. If you need to get away from some, maybe some negative influences or some traumatic things, then yeah, maybe the best place for you to go is Greenfield or Morgan Hill. So Sacramento County has access to all of our five campuses.
And I assume, on a more positive note, maybe that's where family might be, too?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And then, can you remind me, remind us about how the Good Neighbor Policy kind of started, and what other similar Good Neighbor policies do you have on some of your other Northern California campuses?
So the Good Neighbor Policy started in 2005, when we took our very first client in Santa Clara in Morgan Hill. I think we wanted to demonstrate, one, that we are supporting our clients how to be a good neighbor. If you have somebody that's coming from a locked facility for maybe eight, ten years, you kind of need a little reminding about what a good neighbor looks like. So I think that was the beginning of it. It's evolved to reaching out to businesses in the area, and we have a great relationship with them. You know, we've tried to do open houses, outreach, going to try and do more of that, more accessible, have a better routine schedule, I think. But the Good Neighbor Policy was intended for people to help us. I will also say, just as a side note, that Sacramento County is, I mean, we did the Good Neighbor Policy because it was a good idea for us and our community. Sacramento County Behavioral Health is the only county that we've ever been asked to have a Good Neighbor Policy. So that was nice. We already had one, and I think, you know, like anything else, we can improve upon it.
Okay, very good. I know we have probably a handful of members of the public that wish to address the board as well, so I don't want to keep them too long, but I'll just end with this, a question to you, Brian. There's been, I think fair to say, a bit of an evolving list of conditions that have emerged from Planning Commission and even from our discussion last week about kind of the intensity of the use, that type of thing. Can you kind of tell us kind of where we're at as of today in terms of those conditions? And I'm not talking about the initial conditions, but those that really came from the Planning Commission and now here on appeal.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. I was actually going to do that in my rebuttal after, after public comment, but I can do it now.
No, I think it's good to do it now, because I'd like the public to understand it before they have a chance to address us.
So we had listened to the comments made at the CPAC meetings from the neighbors, and we also had our conversation with you, and we would like to propose six additional, six additional conditions of approval that I think meet everyone's concerns. So based upon what we heard, there's six, and I'll go through them really quick, I think you have a copy of them, hopefully. The entire facility, one, shall be fenced, including entry and exit gates, and the residents, as you heard, will complete day and overnight passes and sign in and out of the facility with staff. Number two is the applicant operator will host an annual open house to the community and immediate neighborhood. My understanding is they did that this week, and the Neighborhood Association surprisingly was invited and did not show up, and also was invited to sit down with Synergy staff and did not reply, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
We've offered.
Yep, so we offered, I mean, multiple times. So number three is the applicant operator shall prepare an annual report to the Board of Supervisors regarding community and neighborhood outreach, one, and two, identifying any concerns or problems that may have come to them that they're aware of from the neighborhood, and how it will state how those were addressed and resolved. Number four is the applicant operator will interview potential patients for residency using three assessments. Presently, they do two assessments, before someone's allowed to reside there, and now they will do three assessments. Number five, the applicant operator will prioritize Sacramento County residents over other county referrals. And responding also to something that Lynda mentioned is that the applicant operator will use drug sniffing dogs at the property for a minimum of three times per year, rather than the two that they've already done as a trial.
All right, thank you, appreciate that.
And I'd like to save some time for rebuttal.
Absolutely. And please, you know, do remind us in your rebuttal, if necessary, if any of those additional conditions are responding to what you're hearing from, from folks. So Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Brian, as you know, I'm a land guy, so I'm going to dig into the map itself a little bit. And as I understand it, the special development permit, one of those items that was being requested to be a waiver is now no longer. The landscaping screening, that has been provided where it was not going to be provided previously, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so then that, the major issue left then, other than some landscape along the parking area, is the ten-foot rear and side yard setback that's not being met by the two dormitory buildings. Other than simply squeezing as much into the space that you have, what is the justification of the reasoning as to why we should provide a variance?
I believe that is because it's adjacent to other property that Synergy already owns next door, where they have a residence for staff.
Can we confirm that? Because it's actually.
That's what I recall.
There's a, there's a property to the, I think it's to the south, on the end of the cul-de-sac, and then there's two properties, it looks like.
The dam's not in her head, yes, that's the area.
Okay.
And so they own the lock and the residence next door.
Okay, but what I'm trying to explain is that there's at least three residences that are affected by that setback. There's one to the south at the end of the cul-de-sac, and then there's two, maybe, you know, it looks like two to the east.
Yeah. Leanne, maybe you can give us an idea of why that was requested? We don't have the architect with us today.
Okay.
I think that might help.
I think Leanne's going to bring back up the PowerPoint to better address your question. Great.
Nope, that's the wrong agenda item.
Metro, can you please bring up the presentation for item number sixty-one?
It's the item for Nueva Vista.
So I believe Supervisor Hume, what you are referencing is this right here. This is the two dormitory buildings, and it would be a twenty-five-foot setback adjacent to the other single-family residential, and they're proposing a ten-foot setback, and they do have screening landscaping along there. So I think your, my understanding of your question to the applicant would be why there's that ten-foot setback, correct?
Correct, why we are asking for a variance there. And then if you look at building number nine, which is the top of the two donut buildings, there is a lot to the south and two lots to the east that are both, it looks like, from the aerial photographs in the staff report, that those are?
Right.
All residential parcels.
Correct, and I think what the deviation request would be here for the rear yard setback, the side yard setback would be okay.
So, okay. So we're considering one side a side yard and one side a rear yard?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so then, back to the question regarding the house residence for staff, does Synergy own any of those parcels that are not colored there, that are surrounded by the project, either just to the north of the driveway or up closer to the corner of Forty-seventh and Roosevelt?
Yeah, I believe the lots and buildings that are in?
Can you, can you speak? Brian? Brian?
I believe the lots and buildings that are in the white area are not owned by Synergy.
Okay.
The color areas are.
I would assume that in your assemblage, you tried to purchase those properties and the owners just chose not to sell?
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't think they have.
Okay.
Oftentimes, on a project like this, you'll see these kind of configurations, because the property owner approached them, is often what happens, is, hey, I see you're doing a project, you're going to be expanding, would you like my lot, my house, what have you? That's very often what happens.
The only place outside is Forty-six twenty, is that is our house. It's outside of the CUP, it's on the corner of Forty-seventh and Roosevelt. That one is outside.
Okay, but you own it?
But we own it.
It's not a corner, it's just, it's the corner of, I mean, it abuts the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, correct?
No.
No.
It's the other side.
The other side, okay. Well, I don't understand that.
So that, so right now, that's where I live. So I stay there, staff stays there when they're traveling, but it's outside the CUP, so it's a privately owned house.
I understand that, but is it, is it an actual corner lot?
Yeah, it's on the corner, so I'm going to say yes. I don't, it's on the corner. It's definitely on the corner of Forty-six twenty Roosevelt.
What's the, what's the cross street?
It's Forty-seventh and Roosevelt.
Okay.
All in the same quadrant.
Gotcha, all right. Because I thought there was a house to the west that was also, that's why I'm confused.
There is, the other brown one is. The other brown one is, that one is a two-story duplex upstairs. One of our staff lived there permanently, and then downstairs is our HR office and also staff housing for visiting, traveling staff.
So, you literally have staff that are on both sides of...
Correct.
...of the campus?
Correct.
Okay. Does that complete your line of questioning? Okay, very good. Okay, I think that's it for now, but of course, be prepared to address any other questions or statements the board makes, and at this time, we're going to hear from the public. So Madam Clerk, first, first name, please.
First speaker is Tressla Gilbreth.
And again, I'm going to respectfully ask that those that wish to address the board, please keep your testimony to two minutes. That way, everyone has a chance to address this, if you so choose.
Greetings and, greetings and good afternoon to you all. My name is Tressla Gilbreth. After careful consideration, the South Oak Park Community Association, a local resident-led neighborhood association for the area, has determined that Nueva Vista proposed facility expansion is not in the best interest of our community. We find, in fact, it works in opposition of the extensive uplifting efforts. The proposed expansion will add to the number of health and human service agencies in an already burdened neighborhood. From our assessment, within one square mile radius, we already have several social service programs, along with other entities and conditions that are undesirable: prostitution, illegal dumping, sex trafficking, and high crimes, as we've mentioned. Home appreciation is one of the only wealth-building opportunities for our families. We need to do everything possible to help preserve this potential. Currently, there are multiple studies being done in the Stockton Boulevard, and the desire for the entertainment centers and things to increase the quality of the residents. It is very important for us to be understood that we're not saying not in our backyard, but we already have a full backyard. We serve these, we see these services as important, however, it is critical for the entire county of Sacramento to share this load equitably, just not our neighborhood. We want to change the economic outlook and bring wealth opportunities to the low-income area. Communities weigh heavily in health and human services, are not likely to view our area as desirable. As a county planning committee, we understand, you all understand more than most about the importance of space. A health, a healthy space allows for neighborhoods to engage in one another, children to enjoy being outdoors with their families, and people from different economic, social, socioeconomic backgrounds...
Can you please conclude your remarks?
Yes. So the requests, we request respectfully that the denial for the Nueva Vista proposal expansion, we believe that the expansion would undermine our efforts to work together with a vision for upliftment in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ricardo Almada.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ricardo Almada. I worked with Synergy Programs as the facility manager for the past nine years and have the privilege of overseeing five different properties within the company. My time here has been marked by significant and personal and professional growth, as well as witnessing firsthand the positive changes Synergy has fostered in both the properties and the surrounding neighborhoods. Throughout my nine years at Synergy Programs, I've had the opportunity to manage several properties, each presenting its own unique challenges and rewards. I've been responsible for the day-to-day facilities operations, including overseeing maintenance, ensuring tenant satisfaction, and coordinating various projects aimed at improving the living conditions of those in our care. My role has involved not only operational management, but also fostering a sense of community within the properties, striving to create safe, comfortable, and supportive environments for all residents. One of the most rewarding aspects of my job has been seeing the transformation of properties over time. I've witnessed significant improvements in both the physical condition of the properties, as well as in the quality of life for the residents. This includes major upgrades such as building renovations, landscape projects, ensuring all properties pass annual fire inspections, update and oversee installation of security systems like camera and lighting on campus, all of which have played a crucial role in enhancing the living experience of the people in our community. Overall, the properties I have overseen, 4604 Roosevelt Avenue stands out as one of the most rewarding success stories. When I first started managing the property, it faced several challenges: outdated infrastructure, security concerns, and a lack of proper maintenance. Over time, Synergy's commitment to investing in the property began to show. For the past three years, I have had the unique opportunity to live next door to Nueva Vista Sacramento at 4514 Roosevelt Avenue, another one of Synergy's properties. My wife and I have been living here without any safety concerns for ourselves or our baby girl arriving March 2025, and we plan, and we plan to raise her in the community. Our residents, my neighbors, are friendly, engaging, and respectful at all times. I approve and endorse the expansion of Nueva Vista Sacramento.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Lavinia Phillips.
I can use this mic down here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Never thought I would be coming before you to advise that Oak Park needs less, but the area in which this expansion project is affecting is a tab, social, emotional, and economical, that my neighborhood and my neighbors cannot afford. I'm sure it's not lost on you all that this property expansion being considered will add to that tab. This area already has illicit activities on Stockton Boulevard, high crime and others pointed out by the gentleman representing CPAC, you know, things that occur in distressed areas. Expanding a treatment center in the area will provide no benefit for us. A distressed area is distressed by systemic design. Removal or limitations of resources in this area makes it easier to infiltrate in areas such as this, especially where it's difficult for my neighbors to come to a meeting in the middle of a workday, for most folks. I work for Sacramento County, I took some time off today. The fallout amounts to a continued decrease in property values, which will lead to fewer and/or stagnant and/or declining opportunities for my neighbors to build generational wealth. We need less of this, less infill, and I have no problem with the way this system seems to be working. I, I applaud what Synergy is doing, but it's not helping anyone on the outside of that seven-foot fence. Less governmental approval of gentrification to benefit those who don't know or refuse to know who we are and what we need. To Synergy, I say, don't dump your garbage in our neighborhood. How many local residents will be in these beds that aren't part of the organization's overflow from their out-of-town facilities? If one is looking at a least restrictive environment for those receiving care in this facility, it's not going to be found here. Folks receiving care here are no safer outside the facility than we are. Community service is dog whistle, for we're using this distressed neighborhood to look like we're doing something good. It's part of the treatment plan, I'm believing, to have centers placed in already distressed areas, so they can do good in the hood. Whose hood, though? I'd love to see the demographics of the clients you see, on top of the already statistically insignificant number of local residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is Lavinia Phillips.
Michael Blair.
Hello, Supervisors, Mr. Chair. I'm Michael Blair, and I'm a 20-plus-year resident of Oak Park. I am the, on the board of the South Oak Park Community Association. I'm also on the board of the Oak Park Neighborhood Association, and former city council member Jay Chenier had a nonprofit called Way Up. I was executive director for that over the Oak Park area, and then I'm also on the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative Tenant Board. So I know Oak Park. I am Oak Park. I lived there, and I know the residents. And as we look at that community, we look at this one square mile. So I want to make sure this sinks in, because we have low-income housing, we have a homeless shelter, we have multiple group homes, we have a cannabis retailer coming, we have this mental health facility trying to expand. Now, it'd be one thing if this was all over the city, but this is just one square mile we're talking about. And I asked, would you want to live there? Would you want to raise your kids there? Add on to that, in this area, the prostitution, the heavy crime rate, the gangs, the illegal dumping, the multiple sex offenders. If you look at this map, I sent the copy to you, and if you look at the map, it's incredible. I have a daughter who attended St. Hope, and I would not let her walk to school. She's 30 years old today, I still wouldn't let her take that walk. We have problems here, and increasing what we have now is not going to help. We need to figure out ways to uplift this area. Our Neighborhood Association works hard to do a lot of work, to try to galvanize the community, get the neighbors together, so they can feel proud about where they live. My grandmother's 102 years old. I'm with her right now in Natomaus, and so, just watching her for a while while my mom's out of town, we go walking down the street, we, we enjoy the peace. We don't have that in South Oak Park. We need that, and expanding this facility will not help to do that. So I ask that you really consider if you'd want to live there, and with that, I conclude, and ask that you reject this proposal. Thank you. Thank you.
Kenochi Israel.
My name is Kenochi Israel, and I'm in South Oak Park. I'm also one of the founding members of the South Oak Park Community Association. I'm a local urban farmer. I remember coming before y'all some time ago, some of y'all are new, when we talked about passing the Urban Ag ordinance. Our mission for our farm is transforming the hood for good, using agriculture to improve the community. So this is something that's very personal to me. Not only that, but I live probably right down the street from this facility, and I am the person that we talked about whose daughter was approached by one of the residents of, of this facility. Now, I want to say, first of all, that, one, I'm not against what the facility's doing, Synergy, they're doing good work there, but as we talk about, you know, the people that are in these facilities, there are at least four sexual offenders in the, in this facility. Three of them have a rating of over eight, which means that they are very, very high-risk to recommit. Now, these things may have happened sometime in the future, there's no problem with that, but with all the security and all the things that we're talking about of setbacks and fences and all these things, somehow, one of the residents was able to get to our farm stand one day and try to talk to my daughter, in which, of course, he was, you know, shooed away, and then, at a separate time, she was walking across the street, because we have an office at Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, he was somehow able to catch her walking across the street, and then approached her again, to which she had to run, pretty much, into the facility, and then she called me. So, for me, this is very personal, but then at the same time, once again, we are representing the community, we've heard all of the arguments and everything for it, but our community does not want the expansion of this facility. And if they could have all been here, because many of them are at work, you would hear the same thing. So in reality, at the end of the day, the decision is, will you say, even though the community says, "We do not want this here," are you going to tell us, "It does not matter what y'all think"? So we ask you, and plead with you, to, once again, reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ardell Harrison.
Good afternoon.
I'm Ardell Harrison. I'm a property owner and a Director of Higher Hope Learning Academy. I'm also, well, was the President of the NAACP, term ended December 31st, and I've been in Oak Park and the Sacramento area for a long time, and what this organization has is commendable. However, as far as expansion, it's not in the path of growth of Sacramento County, it's not in the path of growth of the city. Stockton Boulevard, on the east, is the county, on the west, is the city. That's how close we're intertwined. We got the path of growth, we got Aggie Square, millions of dollars allocated for that project, millions of dollars. Then we moved down south toward Little Saigon, before you get there, we have a new apartment, beautiful complex, I mean, that you guys have dumped thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars, and millions, to make this happen. We moved further down, and now we have the tiny home community to accommodate the homeless and the unsheltered. So these are all factors that they were able to get in our community, but we don't need to let them expand. You know, it's ironic, I used to live in Morgan Hill, you know, on the mountain, $150,000 house, it's probably worth $3 million now. You can buy land in the community, three acres, right outside of areas where it's not going to be this much a detriment, you know, and I just want to emphasize is that it doesn't meet our mandate on the growth that we are trying to do here in Sacramento. You know, I, I look at Nimbus, 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 Nimbus. I don't want another facility like that in my area. And I'll just crack some numbers real quick, as a developer, right now, that property, based on the alleged income, is worth $33 million. If they get the increase, they're going to be worth $84 million, if the difference is $50 million. Now, I wouldn't be surprised that when Leon Musk hears about this, he'll, he'll be contacting them about what's going on, but please, let's preserve our path of growth and what we are trying to do for Sacramento City and Sacramento County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Kynon Hopper.
Good afternoon, Supervisors and staff and public members. I did send, oh, that's nice. Thank you.
We aim to please.
Shorts can be a disability. I did send a letter in, but I'm here in person, because I'm here to represent the, the actual face of people who need this kind of housing. I'm a family member of someone who, at no fault to herself, falls in this very, it's a small category, people who don't, who do need these added layers of support, and, and I want to point out that, that it feels to me, as I'm listening to the community members, and I hear their cries, and I hear their plight, at the same time, that the examples they're giving are about, about crimes that, that don't happen for people when they're housed with the right level of care, in the right location, and the right level of supervision. And that's what Synergy has been working very hard to do, and at this exact moment, my daughter is still unwell enough to be in an acute care, and very soon, she will need a step-down bed. And over time, she's been trying to manage this 15 years, and over time, no matter how hard she tried, no fault to her own willpower, she does need more added support. In fact, she needs so much more support, it's unreasonable to ask a family to step up and do the things that 24-hour staff with medication supervision can do, to keep her from committing crimes. And that's exactly what Synergy is there to provide, and also to help her relearn how to become a responsible, involved member of the community, and to do that with supervision. She has been homeless before, and when she got back into housing, she was so traumatized, she couldn't buy the, the food for the next meal. It takes a lot of training, and our family stepped up to try to do that, nonetheless, there was another psychotic massive break, and she needed this added level of care. So I'm hoping that, and, and we live in Sacramento, and we get frustrated when she's placed outside Sacramento, so we need the beds here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the final speaker is Marion Weaver.
I wasn't prepared to speak, but I wanted to tell you from my, from my heart, what I know about Synergy... Synergy. I am the landscape architect, and I have been working with Synergy since 2012, started with a project in Greenfield. And I am really a witness of seeing how the neighborhoods actually transform to a better place, a safer place, when, after Synergy has moved in. And it is because the staff also, you know, works there. They create a lot of work for social workers and for people to work there. And they all there daily, they park their cars in the surround, you know, on this here on the side, but it makes things safer. I know that from my own experience of when I first go out to a project that they start, I literally feel scary. I came to Roosevelt here when it first started, when we just went to get the surveys, et cetera, and it was scary. And once they move in and they bring in other people that work there and everything is more, I want to cry when I see the homeless people on the street. They help getting those people housed, and they are doing good things. And I can really, I understand that the neighbors would probably, I would be also worried if I was a neighbor here, that it would bring more crime, but I really, with my own eyes, have seen that it has changed the neighborhood to the good. And I mean, I could, we could do a study on that, and I have seen it in Greenfield, I've seen it in Morgan Hill, and I've even seen it here around in Sacramento, another facility that just kind of opened, that when I came here first, I literally was scared to leave my car or anything near there. And now, since it's open, it's easy-peasy, it feels safe. You can tell that. And it's called the eyes on the park. It's when there's people that are overwatching that want good, goodness. And then I want to say that the urban farm is beautiful, they do farm-to-table, they have really beautiful furniture, and our environments can make people feel better and make better people.
Can you conclude, please?
Let's connect with those neighbors and, you know, bring the urban farm to their tables.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
That is our final public speaker.
All right, very good. As Mr. Holloway makes his way to the podium, let me make some remarks before we hear from him.
I will be very brief.
Well, hold on, Brian. Let me make some remarks before you start.
Oh, sure.
Okay. So, first of all, I, you know, sometimes we hear public testimony, and sometimes we just bite our tongues or cringe when we hear certain words used to describe human beings. I have to tell you, I take offense to the fact that an inference was made to their garbage, meaning, I suspect, the statement was aimed at Synergy in terms of their use and the people there. So I do not believe people that are faced with severe acute mental illness, challenges, are garbage. That's what I heard, so it's a good way not to impress me when speaking for myself. So, secondly, I'm sorry we didn't hear from any of the South Oak Park residents, many of whom I know very well, and I've worked with for many years to do what's right for that community. And the reason I have the map over my right shoulder here, and this is a map that I didn't prepare for this particular hearing, this is a map that has been in my office for years now. And it's a map that has shown, that shows the cumulative investments that the county has made at my direction, working with the community for several years, including community development block grant funds, measured in the millions, for things like street improvements or better street lighting, certainly massive improvements to Jack Davis Park, the one and only small park that the community enjoys there. We've even added acreage by working to take back a distressed property to add acreage to that park. I've, I worked with folks from our social services agencies. When our family resource center that was then located on Fourth Avenue in Oak Park was bursting at the seams, and they needed space, and they needed a place to serve more people, it was District One who put forth some rare discretionary funding from a tobacco settlement, tobacco litigation settlement, to purchase buildings, some temporary buildings from SAC Unified School District, to move the resource center from Fourth Avenue to the Fruit Ridge Elementary School site. And that is one of the more active family resource centers that we have of the nine that are serving the people around that community. So, you know, I'm very, I know that I'm very proud of doing what I know the community has told me they want and deserve, and I couldn't agree more with them, that there is so much more to do. There's so much more to do to make sure that that community has every opportunity to thrive. And it happens to be an artifact of political geography, that that is the most populated square mile of unincorporated residencies, residents, that I have the good fortune to represent and work with. And that's why, in large part, there's this ability to focus resources there, and that'll continue. As Mr. Blair knows, I stood in front of, I don't know, probably 150, 200 people, I don't know, back in 2013, maybe, 14, during National Night Out, and I told them how upset I was because I had spent the afternoon going up and down the streets, seeing for myself the fact that we had so much, so many distressed properties, that we had so many unattended code enforcement issues, including a massive amount of illegal dumping. So I've spent hours, countless hours, driving myself during lunch hour, driving the streets, calling in 311 issues. And I'm not here to pontificate, you know, and tell you that I'm the one that's responsible for that. My office has simply been the conduit for many of the people that have spoken here and the organizations that they represent, most namely, the South Oak Park Community Association. So, yes, we have a lot to do to uplift that community, but it certainly has not been ignored. So I do not want anyone leaving these chambers today thinking that I, as the county supervisor representing that area, have somehow, you know, put that community on a shelf and not paid attention. I couldn't tell you how much, how many hours that we have had dedicated focus, and when I say "we," it means all my staff. My colleagues know that I'm a broken record when it comes to that community. Even earlier this morning, we had an update on the use of community development block grant funds that prepares us each year to start thinking about how we want to aim those rare federal dollars to communities in our respective districts to improve capital facilities, to improve the availability of public services. So for me, that's going to continue in this very, very important square mile of Sacramento County, for me at least. So I just want to make that clear. You have the floor.
Thank you. One thing I'd just like to do in rebuttal, I just would like to address the matter before you, which is the appeal. The appeal said that there's an over-concentration of these care facilities in this particular, especially the South Oak Park neighborhood and this zip code. If you look at this zip code, five years ago, there were 15 of these type of residential care facilities in the 9582O zip code. There are now eight. So almost half of those have gone away, which is a loss of 46 beds in that particular community. In the county, which is interesting, in the county, almost a third of these type of facilities have gone away in the last five years. That's a loss of 19, over 1,900 beds in the county. We need more of these facilities, not fewer. The appeal also said that Nueva Vista is a bad neighbor. They talked about a lot of the neighbors in the community are bad neighbors, but they actually provided no evidence at all that Nueva Vista, in any time over the last 11 years, has been a bad neighbor. Okay? And then lastly, I want to say, they also made the claim in the appeal that Nueva Vista does not contribute to the community and to the neighborhood. And I would put into evidence the three pages, actually, four pages of community contribution that Nueva Vista alone makes in the community, in South Oak Park and in Oak Park, plus the entire page of residents who actually go out into the community and contribute to the neighborhood and contribute to the community. So we believe that with the added conditions that you just have received, that I spoke of earlier, the findings in your staff report, the amount of evidence that's not included in the appeal, and the unanimous approval of your planning commission, that this board can support this project. And I'm here for your questions.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Any questions? We'll start with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. My questions are for planning. So in reading the staff report, I believe it's a mix of zoning of RD5, RD15, and RD20. And then when I looked at the aerial map to show the exhibit of that zoning, it's hard to decipher what is actually what, but I think RD5 is the property between the existing facility going over to 47th. RD15 is the existing parcel that the existing use is on, and the RD20 parcel is that which abuts the, I guess it's the Fruit Ridge Community Council property?
Yes.
Community Collaborative?
That is my recollection, yes.
That sounds about right?
Yes.
So then, you know, kind of to my point, when I asked Mr. Holloway a question earlier, getting back to the actual statutes and processes and things that we are considering today in this appeal, the findings and conditions list all of the land use, try and pull it up here, sorry. Anyway, the findings and conditions give the justification for why the use permit should be allowed. But my question is this, this is very much, to me, seems to be a commercial use, even though it has residential component to it. And so, I would not, I would imagine, and I may be wrong in this, but I don't think an RD5 and an RD15 and RD20 have all of the same use, permitted uses across all of those zones that they could be captured in one use permit. Is that, am I wrong in that assumption?
The congregate care facility is permitted with a use permit to the planning commission in the RD5 district, and so what staff has done in the entitlements is generally, you take your highest entitlement, and that's the hearing body that it goes to. So, yes, they do have slightly diff, they're not, they're all allowed with varying degrees of permits in those, so we took the highest, bundled it, and took it to the planning commission as the hearing body.
Okay, so if what I heard you say is that it is a permitted use in all of those zoning districts, and the RD5 zone is the most restrictive, and so therefore, you made sure that the use permit met those standards, and that's what went to the planning commission for consideration?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And I guess that's really, and so, just to come back to again, and I ask this because in a previous application where in a CPAC appealed a decision from the planning commission up to us, it was very much for me about the meeting the standards of our development standards. And so, this, the 10-foot setback, can you walk me through, other than simply fitting a larger building within that footprint, why that deviation should be allowed?
So I believe that what you're looking at is an overall development of the site, and yes, they are trying to program quite a few uses on that site, but I think one of the reasons why it was supported is because they are meeting, having significant screening landscaping along that frontage, and then they also do have various areas of open space and amenities on that site.
Okay, so the screening landscaping then is between the building and the existing residential parcels within that 10-foot setback?
Correct.
Okay, and if this were developed as a multifamily project, what would the setbacks for the side and rear yards be? Do you know that off the top of your head?
I don't know it off the top of my head, sorry.
How would you differentiate between what is a side yard and a rear yard on a project like this? Is it simply what you're orienting as being the front of the parcel?
It largely is what we're looking at as the frontage of the parcel. So in this particular case, we were looking at Roosevelt as the frontage, and then as you're going, like, the parcels tend to front on that Roosevelt, so we were looking at that, looking at the site plan, I believe it's the, would that be the southern property line as the rear, and then the side would be that eastern property line.
So I won't belabor the point on this particular project, but I think this raises an interesting question as far as there's really no differentiation with this particular building and with the orientation of uses on this lot, to say that this is a rear yard and that is a side yard, and therefore, one should meet a setback and one should require a deviation from a setback.
I guess I would say that, to your point, yes, that is, when you're looking at it, other than the fact of us, like, looking at the lot orientation, the street frontage, and what we would consider to be a rear versus a side, yes.
And so to put a finer point on it, just so I'm crystal clear on this, the eastern side of building number nine that faces 47th Avenue, for lack of a better description, is considered a side yard?
Yes.
And the 10-foot, it meets the standards?
Yes.
And so the deviation for the use permit is only on what is being called the rear yard, which would be the southern part of that building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the members of the community who came out today as well. You know, it strikes me that this is a very similar conversation to one we've had in other locations in the county with respect to Safe Stay Community, a homeless shelter off of Florin Road, two of them, and certainly in the Safe Stay Community on Wad Avenue, where we just broke ground, which is in District Three, very close to District One and District Four, is, you know, kind of weighing these considerations about over-concentrating services in one neighborhood or another. I do think that my experience with Synergy is an extremely positive one. I think they are a very, very good neighbor, a very good operator, they're very, I think, responsive to community needs. Certainly understand the concerns, and I hear you, members of the community, about this is a much larger campus, but I am confident that with the conditions in place, including the additional conditions, that you will address the concerns as they come up. And I guess a question I had for you, Leon, also, is if we adopt these conditions in the staff report, plus these additional conditions that I think have been proposed by Synergy, if they file a report with the board or receive and file every year, and there is a problem that pops up, this board would have the ability to reopen that use permit and add conditions? Maybe, Todd, could you speak to that?
Sure, I can respond to that, Commissioner, Supervisor Desmond, excuse me. Todd Smith, Planning Director, you're absolutely right, as it relates to the annual reporting mechanism. This is a condition that was drafted based on similar conditions in other recent projects that have had, not exactly the same concerns, but a large amount of community interest as it relates to ongoing compliance, operational controls, and things of that nature. So we see this report back as, on an annual basis, a mechanism to ensure that all of those conditions, not just the six that have been added, but the rest of the conditions on the use permit are being satisfied on a regular basis. That does not mean, simply by going through a receive-and-file exercise, that the board waives its authority to revoke a use permit if there are ongoing serious violations of those conditions.
Thank you, Todd, I really appreciate that. I think that, I want to underscore that point, that's very important, I think, for the community to hear, that this board retains an awful lot of authority to impose additional conditions, or worst-case scenario, two. conditions, or worst-case scenario, to revoke a use permit if problems cannot be addressed and are not being addressed. So, and then I want to, certainly want to give kudos to Supervisor Cern. I mean, clearly, we heard a very passionate discussion about the investments in the community. And I think that's the other thing that has come up in the context of other large projects. We've talked about, you know, these areas where we are, or where the county is maybe citing social services, it's combined with investments in the communities. And I think clearly that has been done here in your district. Supervisor, Mr. Chair, and we'll wait to follow your lead certainly on this matter. But I think that's also extremely important. And the final thing I want to say is, you know, Tim, I appreciate you coming up at the beginning of the presentation to talk a little bit about where this fits into our larger behavioral health continuum of care. And that's one of the reasons I asked the questions about Sacramento County residents. And I certainly appreciate the fact that sometimes Sacramento County residents go to other counties as well. But I want to make sure, and I think, Linda, you have committed to that, that this will be primarily situated to serve Sacramento County residents. Because I want to make sure we're meeting the needs. You know, we did a RAN study about what do we need more of in Sacramento County? And I want to make sure this isn't something that ends up serving other counties more than ours. The priority needs to be Sacramento County residents. I think you've provided us with that assurance, and I am confident that that will be the case with Synergy. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Those are great questions and directives, I think. It's always a good day here during our meetings when I can listen intently on what my colleagues have to share to, I think, make a better proposal, you know, on the spot. There's a, you know, I think what you're hearing this afternoon is a lot of legitimate empathy for what the community is articulating. Certainly, I feel that. I had a chance to have a remote meeting with Mr. Blair and Mr. Israel last week, and their, you know, their concerns, as they were expressed here, were expressed then. And we had, I think, a respectful conversation about what this proposal means to them. I can't dismiss that. I cannot, and I will not dismiss their concerns. However, I think part of our, or I know, our responsibility in considering kind of this unique situation, this appeal, we, you know, we're obligated to make sure that if we are going to give an operator the ability to expand and intensify their operation, their use, that it comes with a long list of requirements, conditions. And that list is, again, done nothing but grow. And as I concluded my remarks with Mr. Blair and Mr. Israel during our remote meeting, I advised them, to the extent they wanted to listen, that I think they're, they, the community, are in a great position to think carefully about those possible additional conditions, perhaps in place of just kind of outright opposition. I didn't necessarily hear that this afternoon, which I think is a little, is kind of unfortunate. However, but I, you know, I do think because of the nature of the contributions today from my colleagues and some of the scrutiny that's been applied, both from a land use perspective and an operational perspective, I am very convinced at this point that Synergy, which has been stated, has been and will continue to be a great partner, working with Sacramento County to provide the necessary services that they provide for not just strangers, not people just from other counties, but family members. We heard from one this afternoon. That shouldn't be lost on us. So I am going to move that we deny the appeal. And I would ask for a second.
And Supervisor, are you also wanting to add the additional conditions?
Yes. Yeah. If it wasn't clear for the record, we are going to add the additional conditions that have been both verbally expressed as well as presented in writing to staff and to the board. So please vote.
And that item passes unanimously?
All right. Very good. Thank you. Again, thanks to everyone that
Thanks, Supervisors.
Thanks to everyone that came out this afternoon to provide their testimony.
Item number 62 is PLMP 2025-00023 and PLMP 2025-00024. This is initiations of the Grand Park Brookfield Specific Plan Process and Grand Park Southwest Specific Plan Process.
All right. Good afternoon. Let me adjust, since I'm taller than everybody. Members of the Board, Todd Smith, your Planning Director here for what is a relatively straightforward process that's outlined in our adopted master plan guidelines. I'll just get right to it. So this project, or these two projects now are proposed in an area that was originally envisioned as a single specific plan, known as the Grand Park Specific Plan. The request before you is pretty straightforward. The landowners within the original Grand Park Specific Plan have mutually agreed to pursue separate individual applications. We have those applications on file, and this is the formal step to proceed down that path. So we've got Grand Park Southwest, Grand Park Brookfield that are proceeding with initiation. The second request today is simply approving the proposed outreach strategies. And I would note here, this original project had a formal outreach strategy that had been ongoing over the last many years. This is simply a continuation of that outreach strategy through two separate applications. The third item is a request that the respective project boundaries are appropriate, with the understanding that the actual boundaries may be adjusted. The nuance here is that specific plans of this magnitude often start out at a certain size with defined boundaries. Through the specific plan or master plan process, they may be subject to some change as we go through ongoing outreach and dialogue with affected stakeholders. That is certainly the case in this project, as you can see in the northeast quadrant. Let's see if I can point at that. Right up in that area, that is land that was, or is, under control by the Natomas Basin Conservancy. The Brookfield applicant team out of, based on a request from the Conservancy, has dropped about a 300-acre piece out of the plan area that, again, was done out of response to their request. So the fourth request here is the formal step of directing, me, the Planning Director, to convene what we call our Technical Advisory Committee. This is just a body of experts, affected, interested departments, agencies, et cetera, who have a role in the infrastructure, the land use matters, air quality, transportation, et cetera, all to provide input on these two individual applications. And then finally, authorizing the Deputy County Exec to execute the respective funding agreements. So just by way of background, for those who haven't been following the journey very closely, originally, the county had started off in the Natomas Vision Plan many, many years ago. In fact, as before it was even called that, there was an exercise in the late 90s, well before my time at the county, where there was interest by landowners to develop in the Natomas Basin. And so there were four urbanizing precincts that eventually shrunk down to what was called the Natomas North Precinct Specific Plan. That was initiated by the board in 2015. That's the area on the right side of the slide, north of Elkhorn, which is the northernmost city of Sacramento limit in this part of Natomas, all the way up to the county line, bound by State Route 99 on the west and East Levy Road on the east. So real quick, Grand Park Southwest is the aptly named southwest quadrant of the Grand Park Plan Area, about 1,800 acres, roughly 1,000 acres of residential land use is proposed. This retains the concept of the Health and Hospitality Mixed Use Campus up in the northwest quadrant at Alberta and 99, about 148 acres of mixed use and commercial, and obviously the public, quasi-public uses, the schools, utilities, parks, and open space. And if people are curious about the math, we haven't included the acreage about the, for the roads, but it's all built into the assumptions. Grand Park Brookfield is the remaining acreage, about 3,000, 3,485 acres. 1,700 of those are residential, roughly 15,000 residential units, varying densities, about 112 acres of commercial and mixed use, which also allows for high-density units and the requisite public, quasi-public uses, again, schools, utilities, drainage, and open space, and then the remaining acreage being the major roadways. Staff are keenly aware of all the key issues in this part of the county, as are the both of the applicant teams. There's been city and county coordination over the years. That needs to continue to happen as both projects move forward. We are very much aware of the existing habitat conservation plans and the state and federal permitting pathways for both of these individual specific plans to move forward successfully. So we're being careful about the Natomas Basin HCP, which has the city of Sacramento and Sutter County as the permit holders. And then we have the Metro Airpark HCP, which is obviously in Sacramento County. We've got a significant interest there, making sure neither of those HCPs are jeopardized. The remaining issues on the slide here are going to be addressed as we go through the planning process and the SECA process. We will be careful to ensure that all of these are appropriately addressed. Little bit of a refresher on the master plan process. We do have the initiation step, which is what this is. LU 119, one of our policies in the general plan speaks to logical planning boundaries. We believe that both of these specific plans can meet that test. When we get to a consideration for the board's approval of these projects, we will look at all the remaining general plan and policies. Those include LU 120, which is the county's growth management policy related, and it has a number of performance criteria built into it. LU 127, specific to expansions of the urban services boundary, and I won't exhaust all the list. The Tech Advisory Committee, I mentioned that early, earlier in the presentation. We will look to them to provide as much feedback as they need to on all the technical aspects of the projects. So finally, my recommendation is what you heard earlier. I won't belabor it, the five points here on the slide. And with that, I would ask for the board to recommend, or, excuse me, go forward with staff's recommendation for approval. Very good. Thank you, Todd. Any questions? Yes? Okay. Even though it was a somewhat more elaborate presentation than I was expecting, this is really, I look at this as really kind of a perfunctory item. It simply kind of formalizes the recognition that we have kind of parallel processes to consider various entitlements of what once was a more consolidated approach. So certainly appreciate and thank staff for not just preparing the stout, the board letter and other materials for this recommended action. But there's been a lot of activity over the last year to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that there's some adjustment that we need to make on our end relative to the disposition of the owner's group. So this is something that is, I view as non-controversial. And Madam Clerk, if we don't have any public speakers, I would like to move the item.
We do not have any public speakers.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
So that item does pass 4 to 0 with those members present?
All right. Very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 65 is County Executive Comments.
Thank you, Nicole. Supervisors, I just want to take a moment to highlight a couple of great things that the departments do, and all our departments do fantastic work. One, a very large department that affects a lot of people, and one, a very small but mighty department that does wonderful things that are a lot less discussed and talked about. First, DHA, over the past months, has been focused on improving application processing for all their services. They've made significant improvements with several of their measurements. For example, in the past, CalWorks applications being processed within 30 days has taken, has been about 80% of them have been done within 30 days. They've improved that timeline, or they've improved that percentage to 94%. 71% of the Medical applications have also been processed within 30 days, which is up from 45%, which is significant. DHA also continues to look at reducing its backlogs on applications, one of them being General Assistance, which was the focus of the board's discussion over the last six months, or five months or so. Also, CalFresh, and again with CalWorks, they've made a 50% reduction in that backlog, mainly due to process improvements and removing of policies that the board supported doing. So DHA has done a fantastic job. And usually I highlight directors, but in this particular case, I think it goes to the entire team. They've made a collective effort to improve the process and streamline all those, the things that they're doing and providing those great services. The other one is a less known, a less talked about department, it's the, under the direction of our Coroner, Rosa Vega. She's closed another cold case. She's used DNA matching with many federal DNA matching databases. One of them is called Namus. I don't know much about Namus, but it is called Namus. An individual was missing since 1984. Her remains were found in the year 2000, and she was able to close the case in February of 2025. Again, the one is, has a large impact on the community. This one helped Gail Cookson's family and having closure in her, and her family and her, for her disappearance and eventually declaration of her death. This is, again, an example of one of our little-known departments doing fantastic work. And I can't thank Coroner Vega and her team for doing the excellent work that she does, and thank her for them, and also thank you to DHA. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. County Executive. Supervisor Rodriguez.
I do. I just want to share a couple of things. Last week, Casa Ram varsity cheerleaders made history by winning the national championship in Florida. This is a monumental achievement, the first national cheer title for Casa Robles history. Also, we had Jeannie Bruins, who was recently celebrated for her outstanding leadership and contribution, as she received the Lifetime Achievement Award at the 67th Annual Citrus Heights Community Awards Dinner. Jeannie served on the Citrus Heights City Council for 20 years and had four stints as mayor. Also, two weeks ago, Balsam High School successfully defended its championship title at the 45th Annual Sacramento County Academic Decathlon, earning first place for the fourth consecutive year. They claimed 41 medals across 10 categories and dominated in Super Quiz Event. Vista de Lago High School, also in Balsam, delivered an exceptional performance, earning second place with 44 medals in 10 categories. I was hoping District 4 would sweep the podium, but Miraloma and District 3 slipped into third place.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
That's it.
Supervisor Kenny.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Villanueva, I don't know, it's been years, but I had asked that we look into banning, one, single-use plastic bottles at the airport. Can I get a report back on where we're at on that and even direct staff to look at putting together something to bring back before the board?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Desmond, I believe you have a adjournment in memory?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Patricia Vogel. Patricia, or Pat Vogel, as she was known to her family as friends, and friends, passed away on February 7th with her husband, Robert, by her side. Pat, Robert, and their three sons, Chris, Michael, and James, moved to Fair Oaks in 1979. 1979. Pat worked for the San Juan Unified School District and the state of California for many years. Pat was dedicated to her community and always generous with her time and energy. She volunteered at local schools and many organizations, such as the Women's Thursday Club of Fair Oaks, Fair Oaks Inner Wheel, Fair Oaks Historical Society, and Fair Oaks Theater Festival. She was a founding member of the Fair Oaks Community Action Partnership, partnerships, and served on the Fair Oaks Cemetery District Board from 2005 until her passing. Pat was an avid gardener, taking immense pride in her backyard rose garden. She actively kept up with the activities of her sons and four grandchildren. Pat and Bob loved to travel together, taking road trips to nearly all 50 states in their RV. While her family and the Fair Oaks community will mourn her passing, Pat's love of life brought joy to everyone she met. She will be dearly missed, and I'd like to adjourn in Pat's memory today.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, so, just want to thank all our staff today, and especially our Clerk of the Board, great job as usual. As I mentioned earlier, we are slowly implementing some small tweaks to how we try to manage the meetings a little bit more efficiently, with respect for everyone's time, and I appreciate all the assistance that's gone into that. So, if there's nothing further, we will adjourn in memory of Patricia Vogel. We are adjourned.